I'm Secretary.
Good evening. I call together, uh, call the order, excuse me. This, uh, meeting of the Planning Commission of today, Wednesday, March six, March twenty-second, twenty twenty-three, and, um, Commissioner Crandall will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please rise, place your hand over your heart, and then after me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we please have the roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Crandall.
Here.
Commissioner Davis is absent. Commissioner McCaughan.
McCacken here.
Commissioner Prescott Laffler is absent. Chair Pro Tem Steve Camp is absent. Vice Chair Cosgrove. Chairman McCann.
Here. Thank you. Uh, there are no special orders of business. Item five, the minutes from the meeting of March eighth. Do we have any motions or corrections or anything?
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item passes four zero. Oral and written communications. Members of the audience may address the Commission on Matters of Public Interest which pertain to the city and are not otherwise on the agenda. If you wish to speak, please step forward to the microphone, and if you desire, state your name and city of residence for the record and make your presentations. Please limit your presentation time to three minutes. This is for anybody wishing to speak on anything that's not on the agenda. I believe we have a card. Eileen, is this? Okay, so, um, George Gregory?
Yes, sir.
And, um, we have a little green light, yellow light, red light thing. I think when the light goes yellow, you have one minute left. Okay.
Very good, sir. George Gregory, North Beach, still a criminal. I'm trying to build this structure on my vacant land. The problem is, is fiscally and codes and all the, all the garbage that goes along with building. Um, I realize there's ABs out there that I can do this without discretionary approval, but it's not something I want to build. I'm just trying to build a conforming duplex with a lot split. This will bring tremendous income to the city through property taxes. This will clean up a vacant lot that has been nothing but weeds for twenty years. I didn't buy this lot ignorant. Unfortunately, I just ran into obstructions. Uh, one of the things, I was gonna flip my garage door around, change my approach, change my front yard, dogleg my driveway, and create a guest spot. Now I need like a gazillion guest spots because I gotta park the Miramar on my property. So the thing is, what I'm asking for is a lot split so I can build a conforming duplex, condoize it, and recover some of my capital. Because I am a capitalist. I'm an American, I'm a capitalist, I don't want a loan. I don't want to be handheld by somebody who has more interest in my project than I do. I don't want to lose. So I brought four copies of this. Um, and it's just three pages to give you kind of a general idea of what I'm facing. Uh, the fourplex down below is one of the best parked properties in the whole city of San Clemente. But it doesn't have its alleged guest spaces, so then I can't get my lot split. It's ludicrous. I keep running in these little funny little indie windows and I can't seem to, seem to get a submittal going. So once you peruse that, you'll see the building here. It has one floor above the garages, because who wants to build a top floor for cars? It has a picture of the lot, and it shows you the lot would be a little on a small side, but it's still doable, especially since there's gonna be a lot of vertical building in it. And like I said, this will bring tremendous income to the, to the, to the, uh, city. And then here's a catch base, and this prevented me from condoizing the project a long time ago. Uh, this is where the new approach is gonna be. The garage is gonna be on the front of the building instead of the side of the building, and that was gonna, uh, help me build my guest space. Well, my guest space is out of question now because I can't deal with the civil structure. I just can't. I'm just a s- small developer and stuff. And it seems like the only people that seem to win and be able to build anymore are the rich. The rich get richer and the rest of us just get the tax bill. Uh, so I'm struggling, and so I'm looking for some friendly advice, or to at least let you know that I'm coming your way. Uh, I really do not want to get into the ABs. I would rather just have a discretionary thing and build a normal duplex without any drama. So, sorry, and I guess I kept one of them. There's only three. I don't have, you have three. So anyways, that's the short of it. Short and long.
Okay, um, thank you very much, Mr. Gregory. Um, just so you're aware, so we're, right now, all we're gonna do is listen. We can't answer, we can't help you right now. I'd suggest that you meet with Mr. Lightfoot or exchange information, get his information, and he can, I'm sure, delve into it a little bit deeper. Um, and you can always ask him for my information, and we can meet offline if, if you'd like.
Very good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on anything that's not on the agenda tonight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. No items on the consent calendar. Brings us to eight A. Public hearings. One three five one Cay Avanzado, conditional use permit twenty-two dash zero eight five and minor conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero seven zero. South Hills Community Church and shared parking. Do we have a staff report?
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. John Champ, I'm the case planner for the project for the South Hills Community Church. Just to give you some context for the location of the property, it is located at thirteen fifty-one Cay Avanzado, uh, which is in the Talega specific plan within the Business Park Land Use Designation. It's a single standalone building, uh, that has two units. The first ground floor is a childcare use, which is the Goddard, uh, school, uh, daycare and, and school. And, uh, proposed church is located on the, uh, second floor. There are seventy-seven existing parking spaces on the site. Just to give you a little background and context for this property, uh, it is a, uh, twenty-two thousand seven hundred and eight square foot two-story building. Uh, back in two thousand nineteen, uh, the Goddard School, uh, approval was, um, issued by the, the Planning Commission, which required a, uh, conditional use permit, amendment to the site development permit, and a minor conditional use permit that were all associated with, um, the use of the school as well as the site improvements for the playground areas and a, um, a parking assessment. The parking assessment, um, established forty-four required parking spaces for the proposed use, um, and assessed the, uh, upstairs, which was vague, our second floor, which was vacant, uh, as an office use, ensuring that there was adequate, uh, utilization of the site and for, uh, future parking, uh, for the upper floor once occupied. The second floor, uh, which is the proposed suite for the church, is eleven thousand, uh, fifty-two square feet. Here's the existing site. As you can see, it's, uh, again, only occupied by the Goddard School. There are, uh, seventy-seven parking spaces onsite and a playground that's located at the front of the property as well as the back of the property that, uh, is along Avenue de Pico. The request before you this evening is for, uh, to establish the church use, which is a conditional use permit, as well as shared parking, which requires the minor conditional use permit, uh, which would be shared with the Goddard School. Uh, the school will be operating during, uh, normal weekdays, and the proposed use for the church would be office use during, or restricted to office use during the week, uh, during normal business hours with Bible study in the evenings, and then Sunday services from nine to, nine AM to twelve PM. Project does not require any modifications to the second floor in terms of tenant improvements or any exterior modifications. Should be noted that there are four other religious, uh, uses that are located within the Talega Business Park, uh, Land Use Designation. Here we have the second floor plan. Uh, here, illustrated in yellow is the proposed area that would be occupied during the Sunday service, uh, which the, uh, majority of the area is associated with the sanctuary. Here you can see the seating, as well as on, uh, the side of the building, there are, uh, several classrooms that would be utilized for, uh, not necessarily daycare use, but for the children to be, um, located in during the, the service for adults. The green area is for the office use, which would be utilized during, uh, we- the weekdays. The site is in compliance with all of the applicable development standards in that the existing building, um, again, is not proposed any, uh, modifications. Uh, here we have breakdown as well as the parking, uh, for the church would result in a total parking, uh, without any parking, uh, shared parking of eighty-one parking stalls, and then the daycare of forty-four stalls. However, uh, as proposed this evening, the shared parking would result in twenty-four spaces used, utilized during the week and fifty-seven spaces utilized during the weekends, um, which would result in, uh, compliance with the necessary standards as, uh, requested through the shared parking. To dive into the shared parking a little bit more, uh, there was a survey that was conducted at the site that occurred on, uh, two weekdays as well as on, uh, Sundays to determine what the parking demand is existing for the site, and which was identified as thirty-three percent or twenty-six stalls. Uh, again, this was assessed just with the Goddard School and in the Goddard, uh, parking study that was conducted back in two thousand nineteen, they assessed forty-four parking spaces. So this is a reduc-, uh, is actually less than what the actual demand, uh, was identified at that time. With the off-peak, uh, utilization of the site, uh, between the school during the week and the, the church use, uh, for services on the weekend, there should be adequate parking and a surplus, uh, without any issues in terms of parking. And then again, the school will be operating from seven-thirty to five-thirty during weekdays, uh, and the church would be office nine to five during the week as well as, uh, religious services Monday, or I'm sorry, on Sundays from nine to twelve. The proposed, uh, operations and conditions of approval are as follows. A condition of approval seven point six limits the operations of the church, uh, for weekday for office use from nine to five, and then the religious services as previously stated from, uh, nine to twelve. Uh, as part of the parking agreement, um, again, uh, limits the Goddard School operation during weekdays, uh, Monday through Friday, seven-thirty to five-thirty, and then the parking agreement would be required to be in effect for the life of the businesses. Uh, condition of approval seven point seven, uh, ensures that the u- that if there are any changes in uses or impacts associated with parking, then amendment would be required, uh, to avoid any deficiencies in the parking. Um, one recommended condition of approval that was not included in here but is part of the, uh, typical best management practices for any, uh, service type use, uh, religious service type use would be that, um, and recommended by staff is a condition of approval seven point eight, which would be that the windows and doors would be closed during any religious or, uh, services or events to ensure that any adjacent uses, uh, would not be impacted. Con enforcement has reviewed the application, is in support, and in conclusion, uh, the church, uh, does comply with all of the applicable development standards and is in compliance with the city's, uh, general plan policies, and staff's recommending approval. The project is a categorical exemption, uh, fifteen three zero one, uh, subject to the approved, uh, and approval of the conditions of approval. That concludes staff's presentation. Staff and the applicants representative are available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Um, Commission discussion or, um, questions? Does anybody have any questions?
So there's no weekday activities of the church?
As far as religious services, no.
No youth, no?
No youth, no daycare. Um, the only thing other than office would be in the evenings when the church, when the school is closed. Two days a week would be, uh, Bible study of up to sixteen people.
Cameron?
No questions?
Bart, I have a couple. Um, does the Goddard School agree to this, or, 'cause you're, I think you're imposing a res- uh, condition of approval on them affiliated, associated with this request, right?
Technically, yes. However, um, per their original approval, they were defined hours and subject to a, a, a parking agreement, so any proposed modifications associated that would, would result in amendment as well. And so the property owner has signed in to this agreement and, and they're all at support.
Okay. Um, how many seats in the sanctuary?
One hundred and seventy-six.
Okay, and out of curiosity, is this church associate affiliated with the one on Crown Valley in Dana Point? Because that's called South Hills, I think.
Yeah.
Sure, and introduce your name yourself.
My name is Pastor James Valencia, and I'm the campus pastor for South Hills, South County. Uh, I actually, the closest campus to us, that's a South Hills campus, is actually located in Costa Mesa near the, uh, South Coast Plaza.
Okay, because there's one, I, I thought it was called South Hills.
There's so many. South Hill, South Coast Hills.
South Saros, Saros Del Sur.
There's lots of hills, I guess, in the Bible, so we're just trying to get them all.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Um, okay, I don't have any other questions. Um, this is a public hearing. Uh, does anybody, any members of the public wish to speak on this project, or the pastor, you'd be w- welcome to speak if you like?
But actually.
Sure. Afterwards, if you can fill out one of the blue speaker cards and give it to Eileen, that would be awesome.
For sure, absolutely, yes. Hi, Eileen. Um, well, I just, I just want to say thank you so much for, uh, just taking the time to, to, to look this over. It's been a, it's been a crazy four years, um, through COVID. Um, our church was mainly on just my cellphone and a live Facebook feed. Uh, it's truly incredible that we're still there. Uh, and, uh, my children go to this church as well, and right now, where we're located, they, they're sitting outside and, uh, and, uh, we would definitely would like to get them indoors at some point. But, um, it's been a long four-year journey since we've started, and, uh, it just is really, uh, it's just, I, I view it as a huge honor that you guys are actually taking a look at this and, uh, possible, give us a, a home for the future. We definitely want to, uh, be a service to the community. Uh, we want to, uh, jump right in. Actually, our first thing that we'd like to do is help with the Goddard School in any way we can, with their teachers or staff. So we definitely want to be, uh, just come in as a, what does the community need? We'd like to help in any way we can, and, uh, we're excited for that opportunity.
Great, thank you very much, Pastor. Um, seeing no other requests to speak, I'll close the public hearing and open it for Commission discussion and a motion.
Well, I'll make a motion if everybody's in concurrence.
Before you do, let me just give a couple of comments. Um, this looks like a great project. Pastor, thank you for bringing it to us. Uh, we look forward to having you in the community. Um, and staff, looks like a really thorough and great job, and I just want to point out that I am in concurrence with the findings that are in the staff report.
Okay, I will move that, uh, we determine the project to be categorically exempt from the requirements of SEQA. We're shown to SEQA Guideline Section fifteen three oh one, Class one, existing facilities, and adopt Resolution PC twenty-three oh four, oh oh four. Approving conditional use permit CUP twenty-two dash oh eight five and minor conditional use permit, uh, twenty-three oh seven oh. South Hills Community Church, subject to the conditions of approval therein, with the addition of Section, um, seven point eight, um, all doors and windows to remain closed during, um, services, religious services and events, as stated by staff.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item passes four zero, welcome, and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, they're in the back. Yeah, thank you very much. Um, next item, eight B, zoning amendment twenty-two dash three sixty-six, zoning permit streamlining. Do we have a staff report? No, no problem. Take your time. I think we're gonna be here a while.
Okay, good evening, Chair. Members of the Commission, Christopher Wright, associate planner two. Uh, this is a continued public hearing on an item that went before the Commission at the last meeting. It involves zoning amendments to modify, clarify, and consolidate review procedures in our zoning ordinance. Uh, the Commission had gone through a number of different proposals, and there were, the conclusion of the meeting was to continue it, so we had time to work through the remainder of the proposed amendments, get direction from you. So that is the purpose of this evening, to finish that discussion, hopefully. And, uh, in review, there's three main buckets of types of changes here. There is the clarification, sorry about the feedback there. Uh, clarifications, making the code clearer, uh, in terms of making the tables and sections complete to reflect our procedures, and make it easy for the public and staff to find information. Consolidating six public hearing type of applications that were described to you, and then changing the review process for several types of projects, of which that's where we ended up at the last meeting. Uh, in conclusion, we'll give you a recommendation to continue the item to another meeting. This is a continued public hearing on an item that went before the commission at the last meeting. It involves zoning amendments to modify, clarify, and consolidate review procedures in our zoning ordinance. The commission had gone through a number of different proposals, and the conclusion of the meeting was to continue it, so we had time to work through the remainder of the proposed amendments, get direction from you. So that is the purpose of this evening, to finish that discussion, hopefully. And in review, there's three main buckets of types of changes here. There is the clarification, sorry about the feedback there. Clarifications, making the code clearer, in terms of making the tables and sections complete to reflect our procedures, and make it easy for the public and staff to find information. Consolidating six public hearing type of applications that were described to you, and then changing the review process for several types of projects, of which that's where we ended up at the last meeting. In conclusion, we'll give you a recommendation to continue the item to another meetings that we can make the edits that you've given us. In review, we had ended up on administrative development permits. That is what would replace the staff waiver type of process staff uses to make decisions. And I have this table here to review the differences between what exists and what's proposed. So the big difference is that we're striving for objective standards. We have review criteria that really are findings that staff makes, that are subject to interpretation, and we're trying to go to objective standards. We did look at City of Santa Barbara and how they handle reviews of projects so that we could be more specific in what staff is reviewing and making sure projects check the boxes in order for staff to approve it, versus interpreting findings. Same thing with conditions. We would no longer be able to apply those to a project. It either meets the standards or doesn't to get approval. We would have more defined categories of projects. We have some that are more, have more room for interpretation. Instead, we would have defined type of projects with standards. If you meet them, you could get staff approval. So we ended up at this type of review, where we had a need to go through these standards with you and make sure that, one, you agree that the standards reflect what is minor for the types of projects for admin approval, and whether they reflect what staff should be approving. So then the city planner can continue to refer decisions to a higher level, can refer to the designer review subcommittee as needed to make a decision. And we will be talking to you about the appeals and transparency process, because there were some suggestions that possibly we changed that so the planning commission could be more involved in reviewing staff's decisions if we go this, take this back. So one thing I want to emphasize is that we are trying to meet state law by making our process objective, not discretionary. And so this is a priority of staff, and therefore the focus is more on what the language should be to achieve these objectives. This is a table showing where we left off. So item 11 is where we had discussion and direction from the commission that there would not be support for eliminating public hearings for development type of projects that currently go to the planning commission, and we have noted that. What remains for the administrative or staff-level type of decisions are more of like exterior changes and accessory structures. Those are the, those type of projects would require the type of approval that I just explained to you. So with that, I did provide an updated attachment two that has the correct page numbers. Also, I tried to clarify some of the items based upon questions that the planning commission had at the last meeting, and that should have been provided to you. And I can... Well, you don't need to pull it up on the screen, it's essentially, if you want to, I can, but this is item 11, that's where we are.
Christopher?
Yes.
Does that effectively conclude your staff report? And then your thought is that then we're just going to start back into going through them one by one?
Yes, I just wanted to highlight where we were, and then, thank you, good question. And then to conclude by recommending that we continue the item, I do want to note that there were some questions about possibly changing the appeals process. So when we get to that discussion, I have a slide that I can show you and explain how the current appeals process works and the type of ideas that the commission were asking staff about.
Okay, fantastic.
About that later.
Fantastic.
That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Mr. Lightfoot, I'm thinking that it would be appropriate to take public comments now. Do you concur with that?
Yes, I do concur with that. I think that'd be a great opportunity.
Okay, so we'll take public comments now, and then we'll dig into the line-by-line sausage-making?
Yes.
Okay. I have two speaker cards on this item. Does anybody have a preference? I'll go alphabetical, how's that? Brown before Culbertson. Don Brown.
(inaudible).
Culbertson, you're on deck.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Don Brown, and a former member of the planning commission for 11 years, and good to see a lot of people here again tonight. My first Chris Wright project was a non-conforming zoning chapter that Bart and I went through 16 hours of wonderful debate on. And then after the planning, general plan was passed, he hit us with an 820-page zoning amendment. It was delightful reading. He's always very thorough. I've kind of looked at this from afar, as you guys have struggled through this after this, having a cocktail with the planning commission at home, at home. As far, I can see during the whole development, you guys have been struggling with a lot of this and trying to work your way through it, and you've had a hard time with this effort, and I see you've already continued, you're going to continue it. When I went off planning in June of 1920, 2021, after 11 years, Tommy's was approved, but we're still waiting to get it started. I know we were having some Caltrans issues in the sign. In-N-Out Burger was approved, and 14 months later, it started construction. And across the street from Tommy's, it didn't work sort of, a year and a half, over a year and a half ago, after this body had approved it. That's where a lot of the council concerns are. Most of the council concerns, and I'm familiar with three, very good terms with three of them, are the 80% of the ministerial work day by day that doesn't get done, and it's the coordination between planning, building, and engineering that needs to be fixed. And some of this stuff is, is great, it makes staff's job easier, but that's not necessarily the mission of what I think the council wants corrected. So the concern is that length of time, 80% of the business around here is over the counter, and 20% is zoning administrator or planning commission. So you're looking at the margins here, what you're looking at. And I think, admittedly, Chris, I was in his office when we went through this five years ago. I was the chair of the planning commission, and he had 620 items on a list that we went through, some things that are approved by the city manager. And you remember that day, I sat down with you. Yeah, he's shaking his head, yes. And we already went through this evolution, and we pushed things down, and we streamlined then. So this effort, in my view, doesn't solve the public's problem. It's well-intentioned, it really helps staff, which is, as a secondary, will help the public. It's the interface you need, and the standards, objective standards of engineering and building that need to really be addressed. And it's really what we need to effort. Some issues that you see in this thing are very well-done. There's a lot of inequities in there, and just as the ADU stuff come flowing out of Seattle that are highlighted and is worthwhile of fixing, and Chris has kind of highlighted that in some of the summary report, and to make things easier and more consistent, and I applaud going with objective standards. The big thing is administrative development permit, you need to have a call-up capability for you, the planning commission. Thank you.
Just a second.
Given that there's only two of you, if you'd like more time, we can give you more time.
We'll just give Larry more time, too.
I'll take about another minute.
I concur to that.
Okay.
We did it last time, let's do it again.
Yeah, yeah.
I would say that administrative development permit requires oversight by you. You, you need oversight for it and the zoning administrator. Staff is always going to resist that because it affects their template and their ready time once a thing is made objectively whole. Well, insist on it, and they'll still will brief the council that they don't recommend it, and you people, if you insist on it, need to go to council and say, yes, we do. I think you do. Planning commission's never had a call-up capability in this town, and I think if you want to have this administrative development permit, then you need to have oversight of it, in addition to the zoning administrator. And I would strongly recommend to you four and the other three that aren't here, and I consider that. It's a key thing. If it affects their template, then build it in the zone, then you call it up, staff gets more time on their template to make it whole. That's enough, enough for you to chew on, I'm sure. Have a good time, good seeing you, Eileen.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your prior service to the city. Mr. Larry Culbertson, you have four minutes, or if you gripe, we'll probably give you more.
After hearing Don's spiel, I might as well tear mine up. He was so well-spoken. Thank you, Don.
Larry Culbertson, representing the Historical Society. Wayne Higgleston is ill. He couldn't join us tonight, but he feels very strongly, as I'm sure you all know, he's opposed to many parts of this. I, too, am ill, but I deemed that I had to come here tonight. This is just too important. The Historical Society is very concerned with the direction that the permit streamlining is taking. We're not convinced that any part of this is really needed. It's important to remember that city council did not tell staff to eviscerate the zoning code. They were just to find ways to streamline the permit process a bit. The level of detail and specificity you're going into far surpasses that which the council called upon you to act on. Watching the process over the past 10 years, it seems to me that it's been working very well. It's not broken, don't try to fix it. You may be sorry with what we end up getting. Please do not accept the argument that you should give your discretionary review responsibility away. I've attended zoning administrator meetings and have a great deal of respect for our current ZA and for the process, but our city is better served by the collective judgment of a panel of experts such as yourselves for the, that will protect the currently, the current method of going through DRSC and the planning commission. Yes, it may be a bit more work for staff to put together the higher-level report required for the planning commission, but the cost is borne by the applicant. We deserve the highest-quality report and decision-making, so please don't reduce the area of protection around historic, around historic structures. The current 300-foot standard is time-tested, and it's not onerous. The CHP was not intended for the protection of the historic resource alone. It was intended to provide a buffer zone of protection around the historic resource. From the municipal code, the purpose of the cultural heritage permit is to protect and enhance the city's attraction as a historic community, and preserve and strengthen the San Clantes historic identity as a Spanish village. Your item 12 has a particularly concerning proposal. The city planner would have discretion to require a public hearing depending on the level of public concern anticipated for a project and potential issues for these requests. More than once, staff has erred and given permission for something that they should not have. The chance of something slipping by the city planner is just too great. We need to have a designated, trained, competent historic preservation officer. Most of what you're discussing tonight does not concern historic resources. If you must make changes, go ahead, but please do not take away or diminish any of the protections currently in place for our historic resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Did you get, did you say everything you wanted to say, Larry?
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, no.
Looks like we have another speaker.
Just help me brief as possible.
That's George Gregory.
George Gregory, North Beach, still a criminal, nothing's changed in the last few minutes. Run, sprint, streamline this thing. It's very arduous to try to get through all the hurdles for planning. This guy's known me for 20 years, I'm still working on the same property. Some of this stuff is ridiculous. If engineering builds a structure in front of your property that inhibits you from building, you should get a, some kind of waiver or a credit or something like that. You should be able to work around and with engineering, not engineering against you. To bring up a piece of property up to code before you subdivide a lot or something to build another project or something like that is also very arduous and very, very expensive. And some of this 300-foot radius, well, that's all and great, but look at the historic building on my street, they filled it philanthropically homeless. So, you know, what's that doing to my property values? And what, why are you so concerned over, over an additional guest spot when who's going to monitor that guest spot? Who's going to take care of it? Who's going to make sure that that car belongs there and it doesn't belong to the Miramar Theater or something like that? So you guys need to sprint, you need to haul ass and get this done, because like I say, I've only been struggling for almost 20 years now. So one of my battles was over two inches in the carport, two inches. And I eventually got that worked out, staff, but, you know, now another two-inch problem has popped up. So anyways, please, please consider streamlining. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory. Okay, that's the public comments, and I guess we'll start with item 11.
Yes, may I address some of the, would you like me to address any of the public comments or just go ahead?
Sure, well, did I hear?
Okay.
I'm fine with that.
Just, I wanted to kind of state that we're working on this project at the direction of the city council, where we did provide a list of potential items to change in the zoning ordinance, so specific to the zoning ordinance, and received direction to work on it. So the step is drafting an ordinance to provide to the planning commission to get direction, and that's what we're doing this evening. So I just wanted to clarify that that was the extent of the project that was given to staff and scheduled for this evening.
Okay, thank you. I guess I want to make a little statement, and I'll invite all of you two as well, but I agree in particular with what Mr. Brown said, in that a lot of the challenges that the public faces are not, but the stuff that we're working on, but other stuff. And I don't know if or how we can address that, or if someone else in the city should be addressing that, but that's something definitely that we should maybe talk about later. Before we get into the line-by-line stuff, does anybody else want to make any kind of comment?
Yeah, if I could just tag on to that, I had talked to Christopher about exactly that point, that I think there's ambiguity in the terms we're using in the title of this project called streamlining. It conjures up this vision of, oh, well, we're going to look at this thing end to end, we're going to pull out all the waste, we're going to make things efficient, we're going to take out things that are roadblocks. That's actually not this. Sorry. We're dealing with what the staff gives us, and we're responding to it. So I talked, I also talked to our director and let her know that I'd like to make a recommendation when we get to that point, that we tag on a sentence or two to the city council, let them know that, you know, we would, we think that this is an ongoing process. This was a piece of the process, not, not even a majority of it, and that we would like, you know, to have, when the staff has time, to have this, return to this, and perhaps even, I was going to suggest we could invite sort of a, kind of a study session slash town hall, where we could invite some architects that routinely submit projects here, and invite them to tell us their, their good and the bad and the ugly of what their experience is, so that we could kind of do some data collection, as well as some other, you know, we might want to take a rotation of, you know, sit at the counter for, you know, an hour or something and just talk with staff, but then compile those things that we hear from that hearing, and then go back to the council and say, here's, here's another phase two, you know, some... you know, some items that we think we'd like to revisit. So I don't want to characterize the staff response, but I got the sense that they were not opposed to that, as long as it didn't get in the way of the LCP, you know, and other, you know, updates that they are in the middle of trying to get done. So just so we all know, I have that in mind. The other thing is, since our last meeting, I've had some, I guess, changes of heart. We had, in between this last meeting and this meeting, we had a design review subcommittee. At that meeting, we had what staff was proposing as a minor, what was it, Bart?
Minor remodel.
Minor remodel. And according to this process, that minor remodel would have been an administrative approval. It was not a minor remodel. It was significant. It was in the pier bowl. It was in the AO or the architectural overlay. And it really hadn't, was, I guess, mischaracterized, classified. And that kind of concerned me that we, as Larry and Don have, and also Wayne, had told us that, you know, we're losing control. We're losing oversight. And that particular situation brought it home for me, that in fact, we played an important role to ask enough questions, to bring enough to light to say, this is not a minor. This is actually major. And, you know, this needs to go back to the drawing board. And it's, you know, there's a lot of issues here. And so I feel like what Don said, as far as this is like the 20%, you know, that's an important thing. And I just, I guess at the end of this, I want to make sure that we preserve the ability to retain our city's character and that we do retain enough oversight that we can do that. That's, I think, what I'm trying to get at. And I think we talked about 120 feet for the cultural heritage permit versus the 300. And, you know, frankly, if it's, when we get, I'm very, in my mind, maybe that's not a good idea. Because if it's not an issue, it goes through very quickly. But when there are issues, and I'm going to make an unscientific guess, but just based on my limited time on the subcommittee, about 50% have issues. And at the end of every time, the applicant's saying, you know what? We didn't consider those things. Or we didn't understand those things. Thank you. And I feel like we can't afford to lose that. So I wanted to put that back out here, that we may need, I'm having a change of heart on the 120. And I think it should be, we should retain the 300. And that we should be very cautious about things being flagged as minor. And we need to make sure that the line that is being drawn on minor versus major is very distinct, and it doesn't leave a lot of guesswork or discretion. It's, we've got to have some very clear delineation there if we're going to push it through another process called administrative approval. So I just wanted to share those thoughts.
Thank you. Out of curiosity, Commissioner Crandall, I'm curious if you would agree with Commissioner Cosgrove relative to that it was minor versus major?
I actually had a prepared statement concerning that. And I think since we're doing that now, it'll be pretty quick. I mean, we know what Chris was tasked with. And we know what our responsibility is to review and comment. And Chris, who has 18 years' experience in the City Planning Department, specifically in general plan, municipal codes, zoning ordinances, is the right person to be tasked with writing these amendments. That's what he's good at, and he knows the city. And he's been around a long time. And I'm glad you were selected to do this. But what we've been tasked with may be too specific based on some erroneous assumptions, which is what you've been saying. To implement some of these things, the assumptions would have to be the city maintains a full and qualified planning staff experienced and familiar with the city in all ordinances, et cetera, which, over the last few years, we've had a lot of turnover. And there's really nobody left to mentor them in learning it quickly. The city has, and we have to make the assumption that the city has a specific planner on staff, well-versed in historic, specific plans, overlays, districts, design guidelines, et cetera, which I think the only one I can really say is Chris at this point that's been around long enough to be all in those. And Cecilia can comment on this. We're making the assumption that the zoning administrator or designee has the time properly to properly prepare for the added workload and to perform their regular duties. Making changes to ordinances without knowing how we are going to implement them is fine. And I don't think that's true. Just making ordinances if we don't know how we're going to implement them and who's going to implement them is not fine. We're making the assumption that staff reports can be abbreviated and less informative for the zoning administrator versus those prepared for the DRSC or Planning Commission. That they'd be some kind of different report, and we have no idea what that format is, how much information will be provided to the zoning administrator. And then this is what Cameron was talking about, a recent project presented to DRSC brought into focus the importance of thorough research and documenting when preparing any report presented to a decision and/or recommending body or individual. The project, this project is highly visible across the street from historic buildings, in the architectural overlay, in the pier bowl specific plan, and is a major, not minor, remodel in a scenic view corridor that was not even identified and may or may not have legally non-conforming issues, which were not part of the presentation. The drawings submitted by the applicant were incomplete, but did not clearly indicate what the applicant was proposing. At that point, planners at the counter tried to work with the applicants. They wanted to help them along, encourage them, do what they can. And that's what they're tasked with. So sometimes the, human nature says, well, we're not going to say no immediately. We're going to see what we can do. But the planner should have rejected the drawings, and no additional time should have been spent reviewing the plans or writing the staff report until the application was complete. The staff report was incorrect and incomplete. As I previously stated, it incorrectly determined major versus minor remodel, did not identify the project was in a scenic view corridor, and did not apply the correct design guidelines. If the DRSC had not been in the loop or was a rubber stamp for staff reports, this report and project would have gone straight to the zoning administrator. Not all the members of the DRC identified these issues immediately, but as we discussed it, it was clear to everyone. With the zoning administrator, who doesn't have the luxury of three reviewers and the time we spent preparing for that meeting, have caught these errors? We don't know, because that's an unknown. But that's a lot of work, and it would be difficult to do as a single person. For me, this is a clear example that discretionary views are necessary and require more than one person. In a perfect world, Chris Wright's recommendations could work, especially if he was a reviewer. Because I think when he wrote these, he assumed everybody in planning knows as much as he does to make these decisions. And that isn't the case. He is a real asset to the Planning Commission and the City Planning Department. After hearing the public comments on the proposed ordinance, changes and experience, how important a review and reports are, I'm going to hold my decision till later. When we're finished, we get all public comment and discussion done before I make a decision. But I think we need to get more input on how these are going to be implemented, not just that these are what is being implemented. And I had mentioned to Cecilia, I'd love to meet with city planner because that requires knowing that the budget's there to fully staff everything, that we have qualified individuals, that there's training, and give them all the tools they need before these things can be relinquished over.
Thank you. At the last you said, "meet with the city planner." I think you meant city manager regarding resources and staffing.
Got you out.
Dr. McCacken, do you have anything you want to?
Well, my comments. I think at the very beginning, I talked about, you know, that it's probably, what's increasing the time is probably the staff levels, what's filled, what's not filled, what's maybe not budgeted. So I think that's there. It's in the record. I think in our report, or whatever action we take, that might be the first suggestion, you know, in saying that this only affects maybe 10% to 20%. And really, it's a question of money and budget. And it's both the City Council and the city managers' sort of purview, how they spend it, how fast it goes. The other part is communication between the departments, which is probably a problem with every city, although I think we are challenged with, you know, the number of positions that are unfilled. And then in terms of the communication or the talking amongst or when it goes out of house is something, you know, I'm not necessarily purview of yet. We could ask to see. But I do think we can pass this on the 10%. I'm willing to look at anything that talks about historical. It's not all about it. And again, my just biggest concern is anything that mentions going from Planning Commission to, you know, something less than the Planning Commission. Those would be my comments, so.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate everyone's input. Real quick, because you made me think of a couple of things, just to suggest, or something to talk about, is maybe we could have ideally like an applicant advocate or something, or some kind of ombudsman, where if someone has a real problem, like Mr. Gregory or something, someone that could kind of get on their side, hear him out, and help him navigate the system or get to the choke points and kind of be their advocate. You know, we heard about Mr. Gregory's issues tonight. My wife had a little party the other night, and one of her guests was saying that they live in an Ole Hansen, and they have so many problems. They're so sick of dealing with the city. They can't move forward with what they want to do. They're talking about historical landscape and stuff, and these people don't understand. They say they've been at it for a couple of years, and they're ready to like throw their hands up and give up. And I'm just saying that anecdotally, right? I'm sure there's a lot of people like that. And people, you know, most people that come and want to do something to the city unfortunately aren't really skilled about how to deal with the city. They don't know the language. They don't know, you know, what is planning language? Why is planning telling me no? Why, you know? And so it's definitely a challenge. And I agree, what we're looking at here is just a small portion of the real issue. So with all of these comments said, do we want to proceed ahead with what we were doing?
Mm-hmm. Let's get done.
Okay. I guess, does staff have any response to our comments before we proceed ahead?
I think, well, what I heard is a request to address certain topics. And the order in which you want to go over them, we can wait to go over some of those things? Or go through them now? I defer to you on how.
It sounds to me, what I heard was, hey, we'll keep chewing through it. But at the end, at a minimum, we want to add some editorial comments to be passed on to council regarding, hey, we think there's more to do here or on different topics that we weren't privy to or whatever. Something to that effect. Is that accurate?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, so with that being said, let's dig into item 11.
Okay. So to go back to where we were, we had last received direction that we had some proposals to streamline from a Planning Commission-level review to a staff-level review. So we were given direction from the Planning Commission that would not be support for that. So the direction would, we would be maintaining public hearings where we currently require public hearings. Not everyone that is present was here to hear that. So I want to make that clear. And then the next part of the process was regarding architectural changes that don't involve changes to floor area. So you're not doing an addition. You're changing like windows, and you're changing like stucco and landscaping and putting a fence in, those sort of more minor type of things. That staff would continue to make decision on those things, but we would need to get into the weeds on the language to define what is minor? When should staff be making those decisions? And that would take time, so we deferred it. That's what item 11 is. So if we go to page D32 in your packet, we can get to that item.
Actually, let me interrupt you, Chris. Based on your guys' comments, do you want to revisit anything right now? Revisit anything that we kind of talked about and generally agreed on last time? Or no? Do you have any specifics that you're like? Because you said you had a change of heart. You know, Bart certainly had a lot to say.
I would say that if we're going to do that, I'd want to see the full body here.
Okay.
Having four, you know, change the rules and maybe the three that aren't here don't agree with it, I'd like to have them involved if we're going back to review things.
That makes a lot of sense.
Let's keep going forward.
Especially because they're going to come back to us with all the edits incorporated.
That's what I was saying. We could catch it then.
So we could go back then, yeah.
I was just giving everybody heads up about the experience that Bart, Steve, and I had last week.
Right, okay.
Okay. So this item is D32. In review, it would be an administrative development permit instead of a staff waiver to make a number of decisions on minor things that I described. And there would be objective standards that staff would have to follow to make decisions. And so those are outlined in these general review standards and project-specific standards. You're going to see on page D, starting on page D32 and then going to D33, there's a list of the type of projects that would be possibly, that would be eligible under an administrative development permit if you met the criteria. Some of these items that you see, we were given direction not to include anymore. So we already have those notes. So I would suggest we start by just going, starting on page D33 and going through the standards that staff would be using to review projects.
Which, can you tell me which ones you said were struck last time? You said we struck a few of them?
Yeah, it's item number one. And item number one are the new single-family homes and duplexes across the street from historic buildings. The direction was not to give that to a staff decision. Continue to make that a public hearing, zoning administrator-type hearing instead, the Planning Commission. Same thing with structures between 120 and 300 feet. To make that a zoning administrator-type hearing. Don't push that down to staff. And then additions to similar properties as well as structures adjoining historic buildings, less than 500 square feet that you can't see from the street. The direction was to continue to make that a zoning administrator-type hearing. So that's items 1 through 2. That were cut out.
Oh, I see. We're on the attachment. Yeah, Christopher, on page D32B, section B, not in the actual zoning red line.
Yes.
It would be, concerns that I had would be, I can, I'm understanding this, it says administrative development permits are required to allow eligible projects proposed on the following types. So we could do, so this, a property in the architectural overlay would be eligible. And I think that's kind of the concern that we were getting at, is that is, you know, maybe I'm, I'm needing you to clarify for me if I'm reading that right, that you're saying that, I was kind of reading it, this, the opposite, that, and so maybe I'm just confused on the wording. It's, to me, I'm looking at this saying, if it's in the architectural overlay, if it's a budding historic resource and landmark, if it's properties on the city's historic resources and landmark list, these would be excluded from administrative review. But it's, I'm not sure if that's what this says. And everything else, other than these, could proceed with administrative review. If I'm reading this correctly, this is, I mean, that's where I'm confused.
Yeah, I should say not allowed.
Right.
Based on this list.
So that, yeah.
So applicability means when does the permit apply? So if you have a certain types of projects that if you're proposing in, on certain properties, you need a permit. That's what applica, applicability is, when does that permit, when is that permit required to do a project within that section of the code? So for example, if I have a property near the high school, and I'm doing an addition, I don't need a public hearing for that. It's just a building permit. That's not in here, because it's not near a historic resource, it's not in the architectural overlay. Currently, staff has a culture heritage permit, a minor culture heritage permit, or a staff waiver. That just defines the level of review. It doesn't change the fact that you need some type of approval to do a project in the architectural overlay. So that, that's, does that answer your question?
Yeah, what you're saying is, the type of approval is administrative development permit for the, these versus a straight-up development.
Yes.
Permit. So refresh my memory, if you are getting administrative development permit, that's process two, where it goes to the eight, to the ZA or staff?
It's process one, staff level.
Right.
And, and to make it very clear, staff can already approve projects in the architectural overlay.
Okay.
So what the goal of these changes are?
Yeah.
Is to replace a discretionary interpretive broad set of projects and findings that staff can already use to approve these projects in this code. And instead, get away from that and be clear on what minor is. That's, that's really what the proposal is, not to, not to take things in a whole new direction.
I got you. So let me just then take it the next step. What you're saying with section D is if it's one of the items, one through 25, those are the things that would be applicable to the staff being able to, to approve it.
Except one and two now, because we were told not to do those.
Gotcha. Okay, I'm with you now. Okay.
And I've got one question to clarify. How does a specific plan dovetail into this?
If a specific plan requires some type of architectural review, if, this would apply. So if there's like something defined in, let's say, the pierable specific plan, the architectural overlay, right? So if you're doing a minor project in the architectural overlay in pierable, it would be treated the same as if it's in the downtown. You would, if you meet these criteria, you could potentially get staff approval. If you don't meet the criteria, it's a public hearing. And that's how it works right now. Except we're trying to make it more objective, that's the big difference.
The pierable specific plan has a section in there for what's major and minor.
Yes.
Okay.
Actually, no, it does not define that. The zoning ordinance defines what's minor or major.
Well, I thought that until they said major, minor on a per-building basis, not a per-site, not a per-project, but per-building. It's like the very last thing in the specific plan. I found it last week, it was one of the questions. Because the, whether it's major or minor, it was one building, the whole roof was torn off on, or three other buildings. But when they tried to determine major, minor, they took all the roofs and said, oh, this is just minor, because it's only a part, but it's on a per-building basis, so it was major for that building. So look into that, I don't want to get into the nuts and bolts, but take a look at that and see.
Okay. I will say that I, I worked, as you know, I worked on the pierable specific plan.
No.
And chapter six refers to the zoning ordinance for procedures. So these proceed, currently are procedures for whether it be a culture heritage permit, a minor culture heritage permit, or a staff waiver. If it, it's eligible for one or the other, right? Depending on what the project is. That's the same process whether it's in the downtown or in the pierable. And that would not change. What, what would change under this project, this proposed ordinance, is more making it objective. So check the boxes, if you check the boxes, you can get approval, versus staff interpreting something like, the project is in character with the neighborhood, or the project is consistent with the design guidelines. Versus the pro, which we'll get to soon, you're doing a spa, it's in behind the building, it can only be on paved surfaces, you can't see it from the street, it's detached from the house. That's a lot more objective than is in character with the neighborhood, for example. So that, that's really what the scope of this is. And if you see a type of project in here, or a standard that we've put in here, where maybe it needs to be tweaked to, to define it as minor, then that, that's really, staff needs that direction. It's not a, a big change in direction here. We, staff already has authority to approve the items here, but if anything, we're trying to address some of the comments that we got from the public. And, and Commissioner Crandall about, let's say if staff isn't as trained, if, if the code is more objective, then it makes it that much clearer for staff to make a decision on whether something's minor, right? So it achieves those objectives, and so we understand, and so.
Sorry if I jump in?
Sure.
So like, on, on number eight, decks and porches. So porches, by definition, I think are somewhat, you know, defined, but deck, the one example from last week, they're going to take the entire roof off and make the entire, that, the whole roof was now going to be a deck, not a balcony, the whole thing. So how do we differentiate between something like that and someone who just wants to put like a balcony deck on, you know? I, because I support the smaller one, but when you want to take your whole roof off and make your entire square footage of your, you know, that, like add almost a new level to your home, edge to edge, too. Right?
Yeah.
And, you know, it was going to include all sorts of amenities, bathroom and fireplace and kid, all this stuff.
Well, we can define what, I mean, we can define that. We can say roof deck no more than 25 percent of the area of the floor below.
Let's add that.
We can do, so I would suggest that we.
We're there, right there, it's number, it's number eight.
Well, I want to talk about number three, maybe.
Oh, okay.
We're going to go item by item. Right now, he's just giving us the overview.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, I would suggest that we go, this is, of all the pages that you have, this is where the most writing was, new writing.
And this is really the most specific.
This is specific, purposefully, because we're trying to be objective.
We're going to go one through three, one through all of them. Now, let's do it.
I would just suggest skipping one through two, because we heard there was not support for that, for staff to make the decision, we heard, which I know that we'll get to it later, but.
Okay, so then.
I would skip those two.
Gotcha.
So are there any comments, anything you want to go over on page D32?
It says B applicability, five.
Okay.
Properties located further than 120 feet and two parcels, whichever is greater. Should that be or? Because if you're saying and, that means it has to be both, but then you say whichever is greater. That kind of throws me for a.
Yes, and there was comments about that at the last meeting, and addition to that, we.
Was it or?
Well, we heard entirely that there isn't support for this.
Okay.
So staff's not going to even have this in the next draft, it would just say, properties within 300 feet.
So five's out.
Well, yeah, so, so we, we mentioned one and two, but it's also five, that was my secondary. So that's out, okay? Forget it then.
Yeah, just, just to make a point, we received direction on some items, one and two, that we didn't update the ordinance, right? We didn't update what we gave you, because we didn't finish reviewing it all. So there is some text in here that is kept that will change.
Sure.
Based on what we already talked about.
Yeah, okay.
Well, when you, when you say one and two.
Yes.
I think you're really talking about F1 and F2, and you, Dr. McCacken, are talking about.
I'm talking about B1.
B1 and B2.
Because B1 and two are also no longer, right? And, and five.
No, what I, what I'm addressing is, I.
Are you talking about the attachment, Christopher, or are you talking about the red line?
Yeah, that's where, that's where I think we're.
Red line.
He's, he's on the red line.
Because that's the final, because that's the final.
Yeah.
That's the final language.
Yeah, I refer to the page number on the red line, that's what I'm working from.
Yeah, D32.
But when you say, of the list, sorry, of the list on the summary, you've got one through 25, starting with new residential buildings and ending with windows and minor alterations.
Right, that's D33.
Yes.
I think I understand the confusion.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And it's one, and he was talking about one and two.
Can I even get the pages?
And F, F1 and two, starting on D34.
Do you, on this table, do you see how there's a numbered list right here?
Yep.
This numbered list corresponds with the list in section D, subsection D of this.
Yeah.
On D32 and D33. So we took that and put it in here.
I disagree with that statement.
What?
I think I disagree with that statement. I think it, it, that one, that list is really with D30, I'm, the way I see it, D34 going forward.
I, I don't understand.
Yeah, I don't.
What I'm trying to say is, there's two items that there were no support for. They're on page D33 of your red line.
Okay.
At the top of the page, it's number one and two.
Yeah.
Okay.
D2.
Okay, I see that. Okay.
For D32, is B, are B1 and two still in it?
We'll, we'll get to that in one second, I promise.
That's the confusion.
The way, here's what I see. Do me a favor, Christopher, sorry. Look at, on D34, F1. That says new residential buildings.
Yes, if, we're, I just, I, they're, they're both the same, but what you're, what we're jumping to now are the standards that pertain to the types of projects. So what I, I think to, to cut through this confusion, I'll just say, there was no support for staff to make decisions on new residential buildings, location limited. There was no support for additions to residential buildings, minor. And then when we get to that code, I'll flag what does not, there's no support for that anymore, and you could just ignore it, because.
Okay, so now, now let's jump to answer Dr. McCacken's question.
Back on B applicability.
B1, I think it's just coincidental that B1 is non-residential sites. See, that's not the same as new residential buildings.
So they're still in?
So if you wanted to change the stucco, say, on a non-residential building, that would be an administrative development permit. Like, let's say you want to change the color on a non-residential building, that's an administrative development permit. Right now, it's a staff waiver.
Which is consistent with how we do it today, which is, I'm sorry.
It's, it's a staff waiver. We're just giving it a different name called an administrative permit. The staff waiver requires us to make findings and exercise discretion. The administrative permit would have some checkboxes that would be objective standards.
So B1 and two are still good?
B1, two, three, four.
And four are still good, but five's out.
Five just needs to be changed to 300 feet, like how it is currently in the code. And staff is planning on making those changes collectively with everything we hear.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm just, to, to help, considering we had hours of discussion last time, I'll flag what we're going to be changing, based on what we heard last meeting, and I know we may revisit things again, but I'll, I'll try to do that, okay? So let's do that now. So on page D32, we would be changing B5 to be the 300 feet, like I just said, and then C3, we would be changing that, because again, it says 120 feet, so that would be 300 feet.
And would it be the or?
It would just say 300 feet.
Okay, and not the two parcels?
No.
Okay.
Yeah. The next, page D33, the top of the page, we would be eliminating one and two, like we talked about. Also, we heard from Commissioner McCacken that item 20 sheds and spas should be sheds or spas, we're going to do that. So now, what I, what I would suggest is, what's helpful about this page is it gives you a list of types of projects. In a little, in a little bit, when we get to the page, there's standards for each of these, and we'll talk about them. But this is kind of a nice, high-level list, and again, it's the same as this list. Okay, so, so if you want a very easy way to, to kind of refer this to the list.
Yeah, but I, I think we just want to chew through them, some will, some will scan over it, but, but, you know, one, or fourth, five through 25.
Yeah. You said you had something on three?
Well, I just wanted to get the concept of going line, item by item. So let's do that. So I, I see us as being, if no one has any, does anybody have any issues on D33?
Yes. I, I have issues.
Okay, hang on. If you have an issue with number eight, or number 15, or number 18.
Yeah.
We're going to get to that.
Okay.
In the text of what that says. This is just a summary list.
Okay.
And we're going to get to the text of what it says about awnings, or sheds, or spas, or whatever.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay.
And then you'll come back and update this accordingly.
Yes.
Yes.
Got it, thank you.
So any of the general review, review standards in E? Did anybody have any?
No.
Okay. Bart, no?
So just, just a quick note, that the, all of these are new, these general standards. We are putting these in the code to define what would apply to any project. So we have, so we have one, dealing with historic considerations. We modeled this after City of Santa Barbara and adapted it to San Clemente. So we have items in here dealing related to topics, so staff has direction.
I would like to review number eight on the next page.
D34.
On historic considerations?
Yes.
Okay, go for it.
Christopher, can you just, on, it's, so it's E8 on D34, historic considerations, minor alterations to city, state, or federal listed of designated historic resources, or other potentially significant structures. Let's see, shall maintain, so what this is, what this, what I'm about to read would be the rule now that would apply.
Yes.
Okay. So the staff would be looking at those projects to see if it, if it follows the following.
Yes.
Shall maintain character-defining features, or avoid any adverse change to the significance to the historic structure. How is the staff going to, so I, I don't know how to do this, but adverse change to significance, that seems a little subjective. But in order to be eligible for an administrative approval, the city planner has the discretion to consult a licensed professional at applicant's cost. at applicant's cost to make a determination on the significance of structures and impacts on projects. So it's this part here, or avoid any adverse change to the significance. Is, that's to me, kind of the essence of, where I'm, how is a staff person gonna have the nuance, the training, the expertise, to make a determination about that?
Us, that's one of our job responsibilities. We do receive training. Also, I'll say that we have the Secretary of Interior Standards for historic properties, of which we review projects according to that come before you, come before the zoning administrator. And I think like the larger concern about staff training and turnover and whatnot, at the prior meeting, staff had made a point that if there's concerns about that, the suggestion is to possibly change the appeals process. So the planning commission could call up an item if there's a concern. The, a reporting of decisions would be in the packet for the planning commission. A member of public could always go and look at the list and request the planning commission to call an item. So, you know, that, we're not changing that we would be using the Secretary of Interior Standards. If anything, there's two things. This language is more specific than what we have now.
Okay.
And if there's this additional concern about training and, you know, how does staff know these things? Then that gets to what I said about the appeals process. That's how I would address that.
So what would be the scope of, or applicable permits would be back to D1 through 25. So it's a fence, it's a skylight, a trellis, a wall, landscaping for a historical structure. For just those items, well, now 3 through 25. Basically, staff would be able to accept or reject that application based on their ability to judge that it's maintaining, it's significantly maintaining the character-defining features and avoiding adverse impacts. If they make that determination based on, let's say, the landscaping, which I think is an easy one to me, but something like, you know, the decks, again, or maybe even a wall, I don't know about that, or the trellises, pergolas. So that's what you're saying?
Yeah, I think what would be helpful is for staff to make a decision on any project. It would have to meet general standards, which we're looking at right now.
Yeah.
And then when we get further down, there's specific standards that would apply to pergolas or decks, or whatever it is. Not every one of those projects would apply to historic buildings. There's some of them that you can't even do if it's a historic building, but you can do it if it's a different type of building. So you'll see that later.
Okay.
And then, and then if the city's also working on objective design standards, and when those are complete, those would also apply to projects, so.
Okay, can I throw in that if, if we collectively are uncomfortable that staff, you know, makes this determination about adverse change of significance, blah, 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 we could specify the city planner, or the zoning administrator. You know, that they would have the power to do it, but not staff. Presumably, the city planner or the zoning administrator has, you know, more historical, you know, expertise and...
I mean, I feel like there needs to be a balance between the people that you referenced earlier that own an only handsome property and are trying to do maintenance on it.
Right.
And they're having a hard time. They're trying to do the right thing, right? Versus, I mean, we've got to enable that while at the same time safeguarding that changes aren't made that are ultimately going to change the significance of it.
Yeah, but your concern was relative to, you know, whose judgment is at... But all I'm saying is, we can specify, okay, on historical structures, it's gotta go to, you know, the zoning administrator can make that determination, but not staff. It should still streamline it, hopefully it's faster.
Yeah.
And we're getting someone with more historical expertise and context.
And when we get to...
He's gonna say something.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, certainly that could be a recommendation. I just want to clarify, though, this entire section, administrative development permits, is administrative, so we wouldn't be specifying zoning administrator within this section. That would be a process 2. So this section here is process 1, so if there's something that we think should not be eligible for process 1, then that would be the appropriate way to flag it. City planner is still within the realm of an administrative approval. A hearing is not required, so we could specify that element within this section if there's a specific type of, one of these project types that we want that specific review to occur. But if you're pondering zoning administrator, then that comment would be more of a flag to remove that type of project from this section.
You might have answered my question, because it does say the city, this, this isn't just staff at the counter, this is the city planner making this decision. So that helps me. I find, I see that kind of buried in the middle, that it's the city planner that's making this decision, not just the counter person.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
I'm good.
Okay.
Okay. So are there any more questions or comments on D34?
I don't have any. Is there anybody else? D34? D35?
So D35, we would be cutting number 2. It's a project type we heard is not supported.
Okay, fair enough.
Well, and on D34, project, number 1?
Correct.
Right, okay, so, yeah, 1 and 2 is truck, okay.
Yeah. So, number 3, this is a type of project city staff can already approve with a staff waiver. It's additions to buildings that are non-residential, private recreational facilities. So it'd be up to 500 square feet, less than 50%. And it would have to not be in the architectural overlay, not be on the city's list of historic structures. It's to a private recreational building. It's, cut out a duplicated one thing.
Thank you.
And then it's not visible from a scenic corridor designated in the general plan. So those are the criteria. That's, maybe the only change here is that we're specifying it's less than 50%, so just 500 square feet. And that's about it. It's pretty much copy of our current code, so this isn't a big change.
Any comments? I don't have a comment.
No problem.
Okay. Number 4, do you want to walk us through that?
Did you want to read it, or do you want me to read it out loud?
Well, I'm just...
I'll read it if you want.
Go ahead, Cameron.
Yeah, number 4 is accessory structures, other minor. So minor accessory structures such as barbecues, fire pits, and lower countertops, not addressed otherwise in project-specific standards in the subsection, are eligible for the administrative approval if the following applies. A, for the city's designated historic resources and landmarks list, accessory structures are limited to those that are a maximum height of 6 feet, are screened from public right-of-way, maintain landscaping, are detached from buildings, and meet general standards in subsection E. And then continues with B, structures are screened from adjoining public right-of-way, and have materials that meet general standards in subsection E.
Okay, does anybody have any issue with that? I don't.
The only thing is, on accessory structure, could that be a gazebo? Could that be a pergola?
If it's less than 6 feet tall.
Yeah, so probably not.
For little people.
Yeah.
I'll see that...
Yeah, 6 feet's really where we're at, where we're really, yeah, okay.
It's hard to cover every possibility.
But the 6 feet really does force us into things like, you know, built-in barbecues and things like that, yeah.
A fountain, for example.
Yeah. I think that's fine.
What about a fountain that's 5'11", but it has a 30-foot spray?
That would not be allowed, because it says 6 feet.
See, he's got you.
Yep.
Time, there go my plans. Okay, on number 5, awnings, I take issue with. It says, "Small canvas awnings." I mean, I think, I think people should not be limited to canvas. A lot of awnings these days are metal. And what is small?
Yeah, there were comments about that at the last meeting. And in particular, I think the buildings that are not in the architectural overlay, staff agrees there should be more flexibility. Like, especially like something like the Los Molinos district, where encourages like metal, you know, a different type of materials. So we already actually have general standards. Maybe that's sufficient for you. We could look at that. It says materials, this is on page D33.
Do you want to open it to more?
I would be happy to strike small in canvas. Just awnings over windows and doors that are compatible with the style and colors of the structure.
Okay.
Christopher, I'd recommend that we add a bullet point on this one, because I do think that it would be worthwhile to keep the canvas in reference R for historic properties. I don't think that we would want to approve administratively on a historic building and awning that's not canvas with rods. That's just the traditional style through our guidelines. So I think we'd want to call that out to allow that administratively on a historic residence. But then, clarify through another bullet point, other types of awnings could be permitted on non-residential, non-historic buildings, et cetera.
Could we just strike small in canvas and then have another sentence afterwards that say, "Historic buildings can only be approved administratively with canvas and metal rods"?
I would even add to that and cover all Spanish architectural projects.
Yes, that's good.
Okay.
So at the end of the text, I would just say for, because let's, we gotta consider that at some point, we may find that we have a historic building that is not Spanish, right?
Yeah.
It's possible. So we should say for Spanish architecture, awnings shall be limited to canvas with metal, decorative metal supports. Does that sound good?
Yeah, I still would leave the historic reference in there. We do have some Spanish-style developments through the city that do have non-canvas. So I think that there's a window where we would allow for a metal or some other version of an awning, but specifically with the historic style, that is not something that we have on our historic properties, or alternate awning styles. So I think that is, the best descriptor in my mind would be Spanish historic, designated historic properties.
How about Spanish?
Why don't you just add that to the end of the sentence? Because you said, "Canvas awnings over windows or door openings that are compatible with the style and color of the structure in architectural overlay and historical zones," or whatever you want to...
Well, he was talking specifically about historically designated structures.
Yeah, they would be in an architectural overlay or historical zone.
Yeah, yeah.
Or on the list, you could see the lists.
I think you guys can wordsmith that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think what's important is to note on page D33, you're gonna see there's two general standards that are important, because they, again, these general standards apply to all of the projects. Says the exterior finished materials of the project match existing exterior finishes of the structure. And then it may be alternative compatible with the architectural style. And the style talks about, so like, if it's a historic mid-century modern, let's say the city defines that at some point, there's a historic mid-century modern building, and they want to put an awning on it. Well, the awning should match that style, right?
Great.
So that, you know, we can talk about whether to add more to this. So, point taken.
Yeah, okay. Moving on, chimneys and metal flues. Does anybody have any issue with, with that?
Nope. This is for Cecilia and Chris. Those could be a very important architectural feature of historic buildings. I mean, the shape of it, is that something that staff feels comfortable with? It's something we review and recommend a lot of changes to when they come in. You know, what the cap is on top? You know, is it a terracotta pot? Is it... Saying the exact same things a reviewing body would have on it, but... Metal flue, I don't know when we're gonna use a metal flue.
So...
Other than mid-century.
Yeah, so we actually had a project, the Goldschmidt residence, where they had a chimney, and they could not find historical photos. The original chimney cap had been removed or something like that over the years, and they were trying to mimic the original. But because it wasn't original, they couldn't use the exact same material. It's supposed to be to ensure something is distinguished. You're trying to make it look like it blends in, but it's not a replica, right? And that's like the scope of this. The scope is, in that case, we worked with them. We have that ability now with the staff waiver. We wouldn't want to lose that ability to have people work with us at a staff level instead of sending them to the zoning administrator to try to improve the quality of a historic building in that situation.
Would that...
Chris?
Oh, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I would just clarify, so A applies to historic resources, so those other items in that list would not. So it's just going to be repair of an existing chimney, or in this particular case, if we have good documentation of something that existed previously, then we would allow an alteration that improves the chimney to return to a more consistent form of the original. A good example, too, this is not a chimney example, but the Historic Society, when they used photo documentation to replace the weather vane on the Beach Club. That's something that was processed administratively. When there's good documentation to say, "This was an original element, and we're trying to bring this historic property back to a more accurate version of its original self." That's going to be what's covered under A, and then the remainder of the items would be for non-historic properties.
What was it done through administrative approval, wasn't it?
It was.
We don't do it now, but on some of these items, and maybe you have a reason that you're aware of, that we don't do it. Would it be prudent to bring some of these things, not as an application, but just as a quick cursory review by DRSC, by the staff member with the report? And test the waters to see what's thought about it?
Oh, we have that ability now, and we use it when...
I've never seen it other than maybe a preliminary submittal on a project that isn't a submittal yet.
Yes, maybe we don't do it often. We do have the, we have that tool now.
Okay.
And we, we do use it when we are not confident on what a member of the planning commission, or, you know, three of the planning commissioners would think about it. Because we do want to make the right decision.
Yeah.
And we know that we don't always know everything.
That would just be an internal procedure to encourage staff to do that if they feel that way.
Any other comments on 6?
On chimneys, no, I don't. 7, color changes, project is consistent. I'm okay with that. 8, decks and porches. I think maybe we should go through this one, line by line.
A question on that real quick, on 7.
Sure.
We never mentioned now any more than Lenny or City Design Guidelines. Lenny has, uh, paragraphs on color. It might be worth mentioning that, that it should be compatible with that when applicable.
Uh, you, you may, Commissioner Crennel, you may like this. Uh, the city of Santa Barbara, they have a color guide. Uh, the color guide actually has, and it would be city planner, something city planner could update, right? And talk with the planning commission. So it wouldn't be like an arduous thing to ma- ma- maintain. But they have like a color palette of like wall colors and accent colors that are consistent with defined architectural styles. So we would use that to review colors.
Let's do that at first opportunity.
And if we had mid-century modern, we would talk to the commission and what, what are mid-century modern colors?
Excellent.
I like it too.
Okay, so decks and porches. You guys want me to just read this?
Sure.
Uh, and stop me when you guys have issues or questions. New or altered decks less than two hundred square feet or decks at the first floor lo- level are eligible for administrative approval if the following standards are met.
So I think right there, the less than two hundred square feet part, that gets at what we're concerned about, right?
In the first level, so it's not roof deck.
Oh, okay, gotcha. I thought it was new or altered decks less than two hundred, or decks at the first level. There's, it's, it's or, it's like, I thought, the way I read this, it would apply-
Oh, okay, yeah.
What does it, what does mean by decks at the first level? I assume that means like adjacent with the first floor, finished floor?
Correct, finished floor, yeah.
Okay.
So maybe we, um, we could clarify that. Say, uh, at the, um, finished floor of the building entrance or lower, and something like that.
Was that decks, porches and patios?
That's what a patio, sounds like a patio to me.
Well, no, you could have a, I mean, if you had a raised foundation house-
Yes, yeah, that's true, yeah.
You'd have a little deck up there.
Should they be included?
I mean, if you look at the, the following criteria, it, it limits it further what city staff could approve.
Well, I mean, this is reasonably restrictive al- as, as is. New or altered, less than two hundred square feet, which is not particularly big.
Yeah, I think that gets at, gets at not ripping down your whole roof and put, replacing the entire roof with a thing.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So for cities design, A, for cities that just designated historic resources and landmarks list, the decks must be screened from public right of way, detached, or over an existing hardscape area to be eligible. What is, what is, what does over an existing hardscape area mean, or what's that?
The staff's concern was, let's say that there's a landscaped area in the rear yard of a historic building that may have some significance. This would eliminate any discretion, you know, for staff to say, oh, that, that doesn't seem like a significant area or not. Hey, we would prefer to eliminate that, but we were trying to anticipate what the commission would wanna see. So we defer to you. If you're okay to remove that, we would welcome that.
So in this case, let's say there's a step down rear patio off on Ole Hansen. And now someone wants to build a deck that's two feet up, level with their finished floor. That's kind of the condition that we're talking about here, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'm okay with that. Anyone else? I'm trusting you guys are gonna speak up if-
Yes, yes, definitely.
Is there a desire to keep the hardscape or not, uh, over the hardscape?
I personally don't care, but I don't know how others feel.
I'm fifty-fifty, so leave it, it's fine.
Yeah.
Be moving it, okay.
New decks are of a scale and style which is compatible with the structure to which the deck is attached. And again, it has to be the two hundred square feet or less, or at the first level. When viewed from a public viewing location, the proposed deck is not likely to be more noticeable than the structure it's attached to. When viewed from a public viewing location, the proposed deck is not likely to be more noticeable than other decks on adjacent properties or in the immediate area if no decks are on, are immediately adjacent properties. What, why is the reference to adjacent, I mean, it seems like, this one kinda seems unnecessary. If we have C, basically saying the proposed deck's not particularly noticeable than the structure itself. What's the reference to neighboring properties?
Uh, because you may have, you may have a deck on both sides of the property.
Mm-hmm.
And you wouldn't want this deck to say, be substantially different than the character of the decks on both sides. So that you're gonna have like a defined streetscape. Let's just say that you can see the deck, but it's really low, right? It's not like radically changing the look of the property. It's low twenty-inch deck above the ground or something. You wouldn't want one deck to come way out further than the other decks. You know, you wanna have like a defined streetscape. That's, that's the idea is, again, if you go to our current findings that we have to make, that we would no longer make, is that it's in character with the neighborhood. So if you think we can eliminate D, then, then okay.
I, I personally would think so because, for example, I mean, I've seen Ole Hansen where the house is way in the back. And let's say there's a fifty-foot front yard setback essentially. As long as the deck's compliant with the setback, I, I don't see what the neighbors, i- if the neighbors are, I don't like comparing to other properties, you know, personally. I mean, the, you know, if, if they're all undersized and I have to keep mine under, or under setback or something, or over setback, I don't know.
Okay.
But I, I don't-
The two hundred square feet to me is the key. If it were bigger, then I, I would argue against that, but since it's two hundred square feet.
Well, you might be forgetting something because the two hundred square feet is not applicable to first floor level decks.
Well, the only problem we got is with the sloping lots we've got.
That was my next question.
It may be a couple of, a foot on the high side, but it could be eight feet.
Oh, that's true.
On the other side.
That's true.
So I think-
So you guys wanna leave this?
It's probably a stage.
Let's leave it, okay. New decks are not located to cause potential privacy or noise impacts to adjacent neighbors. So if it does, then it, they can't do administrative permit. It would just have to go up a level or whatever.
Go to the zoning administrator.
Okay, fine with that. Deck wood is proposed to be left in a natural condition to weather or is proposed to be treated with neutral or wood color stain or sealer or painted to match the color of the existing structure or trim. Why the natural color, wood color? Is that a historic thing, kinda sorta?
Uh, well, the historic in it has its own standard, right? It's A, so this, these would apply to any other type of deck. No, it's not for historic.
But, but isn't this kind of covered in, like, like you referred us back to E where it said, hey, you know, the colors and the design must match the structure. That wouldn't necessarily mean natural wood.
Yes, good point. So there are some instances where we, like, narrow down the general standards a little bit more. Where maybe the planning commission, city council may want even more like defined type of materials that can be used for certain situations. Maybe this isn't necessary here. You know, if you don't think it should say that, then-
I, I personally don't think, for example, different woods have different colors, right? So if I'm doing a deck out of, you know, hypothetically oak, or let's say pine, right? But someone does an Ipe deck, then that's gonna be a completely different color. Well, why can't you just stain the pine to be a darker color like Ipe or whatever, mahogany? It, you know, like, natural color is wood dependent. I don't think this is necessary, but how do you guys feel?
If it's not there, would they paint it red?
Uh, I'd argue no, because we have the general standards.
Okay.
That say that the colors-
Right.
The colors have to be compatible with the architectural style. We don't have any red buildings in the city, so-
Repeat that there.
Yeah, or painted to match the color of the existing structure, trim. So, that's what I'm thinking. It would have to match the trim. That's what I was looking at, thinking that's probably preferred.
Well, I mean, they have really dark trims, some have white trim, some don't have any wood on them at all, um.
Sure.
It could be materials are, um, finished to be compatible with the paint scheme of the primary structure.
That go.
That works for me.
There you go.
That's pretty big.
Yeah, cause people might want tracks or whatever, right?
That would be an interesting one on a historic structure.
Well, not on historic, but on other.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, doors, minor alterations, do we, do we feel like we need to re- read through that? I don't.
No.
Okay, driveways, paving. Issues?
I didn't have any issues.
I don't. Fence is, says what's not eligible.
Staff has long heard no chicken wire, so, but it's not in any, not, now it would be in here. So staff would not be able to approve chicken wire.
It's right there.
We're excited, little, uh-
You don't have barbed wire in here or razor wire. Okay, moving on. Historic resources, repairs and materials upgrades. This one we probably wanna read, right? I'm guessing? Or have you guys already reviewed it? Okay. Do we wanna read it?
I, I did, I didn't have any.
Yeah, I didn't have any issues.
Uh, I wanted to note, uh, there was mention of Henry Lenny Design Guidelines, it's in here.
Item D.
It's in here.
Okay. Landscape alterations.
Yeah, this one, so currently our staff waiver says staff can approve minor landscape and hardscape. That's all it says. So this one was, um, this is our effort to define minor. Are we on target?
Right, okay.
And is this for historic resources? Uh, and is there a list of plants that we've got?
Uh, we do in the design guidelines, but one of our work program tasks is to update it. Uh, we, but we-
Should we say in here to reference that?
Uh, we could, we could, we could say to reflect the city's, uh-
Help the public and applicant to know where to look, to find out what plants they can use.
Sure. So right here it says the alterations consistent with the city's design guidelines. So in here you could say including, um, the designated plant list, you know.
That was up that the city, um, landscape architect, um, references a list for the historic areas.
Yes.
Can we incorporate that by reference then?
I was gonna s- oh, um, I was gonna say including the recommended plant list.
Yeah.
What about this tree removal?
What about I, or one, whatever that's called? The tree proposed for replacement is less than fifty percent tree.
Yeah, what does that mean?
Fifty percent of the not taken down tree, of the tree removed.
Let me hold on just a minute, please. Oh, it's, um, it's about maturity of the tree.
Fifty percent of its potential.
Maturity, yeah. The tree's maturity.
So, I mean, l- let's back up and talk about this for a second. I mean, it seems to me most people, when they wanna remove a tree, it's probably a mature tree, and that's the problem. It's either blocked their view, it's dropping stuff everywhere, it's got invasive roots all over the place. Why would we wanna restrict it to less than fifty percent of its potential? To me, I wouldn't wa- I would wanna strike I.
But thi- this is historic properties.
Is it? This is only on historic properties?
No, this is, historic is only A.
It's only A, okay.
And you're gonna notice that going forward, that historic is like A if it's just historic, um, that limits it further for historic buildings, most, a lot of these.
Cause you've got I and then you've got triple I there. They're kinda saying the same thing. Trees removed or replaced with trees with a cumulative tree canopy width equal to or exceed.
See, I have a problem with that too, because you're gonna take out a, a mature tree, then you're gonna say, well, we got twenty feet of canopy.
So you gotta put-
So now you gotta put five little, or ten, two-foot canopy trees that are ultimately gonna grow up and be a jungle.
Is that what this is saying, Christopher?
Uh, well, it, it is saying that, that, okay, let me get to the intent here. And then we can, I, I, I suggest that. Let me-
Love to hear it.
Describe the intent.
Yes.
And then we can figure out if you like the wording. The intent is sometimes people will propose to replace a tree and they come to the city and they wanna put in a fifteen-gallon tree. That's not adequate. A lot of times when people replace trees that have a lot of growth, there is some need, um, to do in-kind replacement. And at the time of planting, not, you know, forty years to grow to equal the size of that tree. So it's common to plant more than one tree. If you don't, the cost of one tree could be very high. Now, you, if you take like a twenty-foot canopy tree and they put in a twenty-foot canopy tree, that could be really expensive.
It's like twenty K.
Yeah. Instead, you would be putting in, you know, three, five, uh, five-foot, uh, width trees.
But, but, but I, I just funda- I fundamentally disagree with that. Someone wants to remove the tree, they wanna open their view back up, whatever. Wh- why, why are we making them put back equal canopy of tree?
This is for staff to approve it though. So that, that's what we're trying to do is define when should staff not have that discretion.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm fine giving, I mean-
You wanna give them more.
Uh, but fundamentally, just so you guys all know, in case you haven't figured it out, I'm very strong in support of property rights. So if, so if this is someone's backyard, they wanna gain their view back, you know, or, or even open it up for their neighbors or whatever, like let them, and let's not throw roadblocks in it. Let's, let's staff approve it and move on.
Well, I-
That's my opinion.
During the general plan update and the whole process went through, there was a very strong tree lobby of residents. I mean, they were adamant, they don't want to see any mature trees taken down. And it was a battle to get to a balance. And I don't know what it ended up, or I don't remember what it ended up. Uh, do you remember, Chris, in the general plan about, um, saving the trees of San Clemente?
Uh, the outcome, the, the, the council had a discussion on private and public trees and to like implement the policies in the general plan. The direction was to focus on public trees. So pu- trees in the public right of way. Um, however, there are policies in the general plan for an urban forest. So it encourages trees and tree growth. When we review a project, trees are a part of what you review on the commission. So the goal here is to define, again, we, we, we look to the commission, what is minor? What, what are you comfortable with staff approving? That, that's what we need to know. This was our best shot.
Yeah, I'm, I'm certainly comfortable with you approving to this level. Yeah, I'm, I'm certainly comfortable with you approving to this level. I think it's uh in keeping with what was voiced during the uh. But they can certainly bring it up a notch and get approval to take out more. You know, if they're out of, out of the way, et cetera. And this is a good example of why I said Chris was the right guy to be doing this.
Yeah.
He's got the history.
Does our code say that if, if somebody's just wants to remove a tree in their backyard, do they have to get a permit?
Hmm, only on those properties I described, the applicable properties. So if it's a historic resource, architectural overlay.
So I'm not in anything, so if I wanna take a, my, my tree out, I don't have to get an administrative permit?
Correct, it's only certain properties.
As long as it's, I, I say that, we had a, it was a carob tree or whatever in the front property. And it was deemed um historic to city and uh.
Yeah.
It um was protected.
Yeah, and I don't, yeah, so.
Well, front yard is different from backyard.
Oh, yes, and that's what he's, I think, made pretty clear here.
Does, does it talk about backyard versus front yard?
That we could definitely define that, so. Uh, right now it does not, just defines based on the, the maturity, well.
Are there protected trees? Are there protected trees outside of the historic overlay or architectural overlay zone?
Only public trees right now are. Directed by the city council to be a focus of protection. There's not a, like, citywide tree ordinance.
So if the city sits in the public right-of-way, I mean, if the tree sits in the public right-of-way, it's either property of the HOA or the city?
Uh, well, there might not be an HOA, so it could be like just the property owner.
If it's in the public right-of-way, it wouldn't be the, it would be the. Obvious, wouldn't it?
Sure, but you don't have to get a permit. It is considered public right-of-way, but you don't have to get a permit to remove it. So how would you know, uh? How would you know if a hit, a tree was historically relevant? You wouldn't know until after somebody complained it was taken down.
If it's in the public right-of-way, the city manager, I think, the city manager has to approve the removal of the tree. I think that's the, the procedure. Um, the, the city is involved in that decision.
Okay, it's a gray zone, it's a gray zone, yeah.
Cuz the city owns the tree. But if the property, if the tree is like right beyond the property line, right, and a private entity.
Right, I'm talking about in the, in the, cuz everything else is outside of the, but in the public right-of-way. Okay?
Should there be, uh? Trees be distinguished between what is visible from, well.
I wouldn't say visible, I'd say front yard or backyard. Yeah, exactly.
So in front of buildings or behind buildings?
To me, there's a definite distinction.
I guess it would be helpful if we clarified what this applies to. Cuz I'm kinda confused, where would I go to see where, what trees are in scope to be controlled by this? And, cuz I think that's part of the confusion up here. What, what is, some people are thinking it's people's private backyards, other people are thinking it's public right-of-way. Can you clarify? What defines? Tree removal scope, what?
Okay.
Is the definition.
If I ask what's in the code, like what's currently in the code if you wanna remove a tree?
It doesn't. It just says minor landscape, city staff can approve.
Even in the public right-of-way?
Uh, public right-of-way, I. I think it's the city manager, cities.
In most cities, it's kind of. It's just that area, like you plan it, but if, if it starts ripping up the sidewalk, if you happen to have a sidewalk. And you didn't get permission, sort of like for the city, then you might have.
You better hope nobody trips on that broken sidewalk.
Yeah, so. And at least in the lawsuit, the city would say, well, we didn't get permission for that.
Yeah, I think we need the scope because there's, to me, that would help us clarify this, what qualifies for this to govern.
Yeah, and.
Well, this applies only in the historical and architectural, right?
This is non-residential, this architectural overlay, historic sites. And because we have the three-hundred-foot rule, all properties within three-hundred feet of a historic building.
Yeah, and it, it is important, and I believe you're probably looking at a project right now where it's historic residential. And it's like eighty percent landscape.
So, yeah.
That's a. Lot to uh review.
One thing I would mention, Bart, you, you mentioned, well, this is just what staff could approve, they could always apply to kick it up a level if. My concern about that a little bit is, once it gets into code like this, then future ZAs or planning commissions could kind of reference it like, well, that's the standard. Well, that's the standard for staff review, but that's not necessarily. It, it might kind of de facto become like.
If it's not worded correctly, yes, you're absolutely right. It needs to be.
Cuz I've seen stuff like that happen before, and then they're like, oh, well, that's, you know, whatever, so.
Cuz some of, the thing I'm thinking about, Christopher, is, you know, not. A voluntary removal. Sometimes the, with the winds, the, all the rain, the saturation, the root ball becomes unstable and it just tips over. And so now, I don't know how to, I wanna, we should make it easy. If a tree is knocked over by the wind, or someone hits it with their car and it's damaged, or, you know, maybe it's. For sure those, I don't know if roots lifting, lifting the sidewalk or other um paved areas qualifies. But for those situations, I, I don't know that we should make it hard on people. People should just be able to remove that tree, and then the question is, you know, maybe they wanna replace it, I don't know. To me, if it's damaged. I, I, you know, the first thing they should be able to do is, you can take it out. Right, I don't.
Yeah.
I don't.
But that's not gonna be the majority of cases. I, I kinda feel like what we should do.
I get it, but if, if it's, it's, it could be residential areas in the, in the architectural. Um, overlay, which is, you know, several square blocks and it could be historical property, so these trees could be old. So I'm just thinking about that, if I'm a homeowner and I have an old tree and it just falls over because of the wind or something. I don't wanna get in trouble for taking it out.
Well, and or have to replace it with a bunch of canopy.
With another, with a twenty-thousand-dollar tree that's similar in size.
I'm not sure we can resolve this. Uh, tonight with, I mean. We're trying to streamline and give the staff the opportunity to approve some tree, well, I've turned it off. Some tree removals. If this wasn't even here, what would happen?
We would just be able to approve minor landscape, that's it, just minor landscape.
Whatever that is defined as.
Yeah. I, I do have some suggestions, I think we could, you might like.
Okay.
Uh, so working with Pat Murphy over the years, I've known, I. I've seen some patterns on what recommendations he gives us. So with the reserve community, I don't know if you remember, there's a lot of talk about trees and there's.
And their views and taking them out on the.
Yeah.
Backyard slopes and all.
So there was a lot that actually came from that project, including a tree policy. That he helped us write. There is, there's two categories, there's types of trees that are removed because they're destructive, they're unhealthy. There's like four or five um types where those are like very valid. Situations where someone should be removing a tree with, with even more streamlining.
Yeah, tipped over. And to give you a quick overview, sorry to interrupt. This was a project that got approval. It wasn't even a conditional, a master plan approval development. And the landscape plan showed the trees, how many trees, and that is what was approved. And those are the trees that were being taken out, those original ones that the um project was approved with. And uh the determination was made, you gotta have that many trees there. Because that's how the project was built. And that's a little unique, particularly to that one development, but uh. That was a caveat, why do you have to replace that tree? Well, each, I think each house had to have like two trees, let's say, on the. Back or whatever it was.
It was a unique situation because it was our hillside development ordinance to screen it.
That was it.
But like, so we wouldn't like mimic, but there's language there that gets to what I heard about a tree hurting a property. So what we could do is put something like that in here that says regardless of the location. If it's these categories of trees, you could just replace it. So that's one idea I have. Um, that gets to like, you know, um, it seems like just kind of more flexible.
But not replace it of equal canopy?
Well, to get to that uh issue, what I would suggest is if it's not one of those categories. Then often Pat Murphy will say the minimum tree that you plant is a twenty-four-inch box tree. So we could say um either plant the tree to the same size up to um minimum, um, you know, like. Try to have a minimum twenty-four-inch box tree if the, the existing tree is that size or larger.
I'm fine with that, that's twenty-four-inch box, that's fine, that's easy. But trying to replace canopy size for.
Too hard.
Yeah, what, what about, I mean, I would be okay with staff approving tree removals that are in the rear yard.
You'd be okay with what?
We, if, like, we didn't do any discussion of rear yard versus front yard.
Oh.
For, I, I think front yard trees, right, you know, a lot of new developments, most new developments require, you know, one fifteen-gallon, twenty-four-inch box tree in the front yard. Kind of create a street tree or street scene or whatever. But in people's rear yard, I think that's, they should have more flexibility.
Agreed.
To.
Except for ones in the hillside ordinance.
Okay.
Because that's required, those trees are required.
It, it's required, and in fact, we could even put in here. Trees that are not. Required for the hillside development ordinance.
That would work.
And then it covers that, yeah. Um, I actually wanna look at uh. Five, so it says no front setback, historic or specimen trees proposed for removal.
Which ones is?
This is.
Five, item fee.
G five. So what I'm hearing, though, is if it's one of these categories, like it's destructive, it doesn't matter where the location is.
Yeah.
You should be able to remove that.
Yeah.
So let's say it's a voluntary tree that they wanna remove in the front yard, is there a problem with that? Staff approving a tree in the front yard. And it's healthy. Should staff be able to approve that?
On a nonhistoric.
Can you define voluntary, Christopher? Uh, they want to remove it. They don't have to remove it to save their property.
Uh, what, what if we say, personally, I would be okay with it. As a compromise, we could say they could remove it and then replace it with a twenty-four-inch box tree. So they could, let's say they have some big overgrown thing, they wanna remove it, they wanna regain their view, they could take it down, but replace it with something. A twenty-four-inch box tree, it's gonna take time to grow up and. Whatever.
But this landscape alteration is connected to a project.
It could be a single tree.
But it's connected to a project. What brings, what brings it up in front of your administrative attention?
It, let's say, they, let's just, it's not gonna happen.
There has to be something, there has to be something that brings it to your attention, right, a project.
Something triggers it.
Something, because otherwise, if I just wanna remove. A tree that's not in my setback, that's in my front yard, I don't have to get, I don't have to come to you.
Well.
See, that's. Do I?
If you know the code and you wanna follow the code and you're in the architectural overlay.
If you're in the architectural.
Only thing you're doing is removing a tree, you would need a permit, yes.
And I tell you, hun- probably ninety-nine point eight percent of the population does not know that.
Yeah, that's true. One comment I would make is that, I know you were talking about urban forests and people like trees and all that stuff. People move to San Clemente for the views. They don't move to San Clemente for the urban forests and then, and for the architecture. I mean, they, they do for the architecture, and I'm just saying, like, if, and if someone loves trees, buy a big lot and plant all the freaking trees you want. But don't make your neighbor have a big problem with his trees if he wants to take them down, that's my opinion.
I don't, yeah, I, I, I like where you're going, if there's, there should be a category that makes it easy, if a tree tips over or whatever. Maybe another way to, again, we're only talking, it would be nice to have it clarified, we're only talking. In the architectural overlay or historic property if you're residential, that's who this applies to, no one else. No one else, right?
Yeah, that's at the very beginning, when we talked about the applicability.
So maybe we can have a tree size, like if it's over twenty feet, you get a permit, if it's under twenty feet.
Even if you live in the architectural, if you live in the architectural overlay zone, and I wanna just change a little bit of my front yard, like add a few plants or.
Rotating wall.
Yeah, well, that's.
That's different.
If I wanna just like replace this little tree with that or this bush with that, I don't need to have a landscape permit, do I?
You do.
Not unless I have to have sprinklers put in.
No, you, you do, um, currently you would need a staff waiver to do that. Uh, staff did consider whether any, any landscaping could be exempt. But this was one category that is so broad that we didn't really know where to, you know, we, this is our best effort to try to. Guess where you may be.
Yeah.
Well, let's try to satisfy everyone.
Yeah, to me, I think we're trying to alleviate.
We were cautious here, you know, we were cautious, frankly.
To me, I think we're trying to alleviate, if there's a specimen tree and someone buys a property and says, well, I'm just gonna chop that thing down. That's where I think we're trying to, hey, wait a minute, but if it's a tree under twenty-five feet or something. I think we should allow staff to just, I, I don't even think that they should get, need a permit for that. I think we should try and narrow down, we're talking about if, if, if it's rotten, if it has a disease, if it tipped over, if it's uprooting a structure. No, you're allowed to do it, you don't even need a permit. If it's under a certain height limit, I think people should just be allowed to do it. It's, we're trying to, I think, capture trees that are of a certain prominence. That that's where we would want to have the, have a permit, to me.
Well, I, I'm.
To make it easy.
I don't think we can resolve this tonight without getting out and reading the general, general plan, et cetera. Cuz we're making stabs at things, we don't know if they're in conflict with it or not.
I agree, maybe staff should come back with the proposed, you know, you've heard us wrestling with it. Maybe re- rethink, you know, come back next time with something.
Yeah, I think what helps staff uh on something like this is knowing where the lines are.
I'll, I'll make a recommendation.
You know, like, what should staff not approve?
Yeah, if.
What's important?
If we're, rather than trying to craft it tonight, if we're. If after this discussion, we have a sense of it, I'd be willing to volunteer, maybe one other person would wanna volunteer with me. To meet with staff and do that offline crafting of a draft.
That might even be worth talking to um. City landscape architect, see if he has other um. Cities that have something like that, uh, so you don't have to create it from scratch.
That, that's, I got some of this from Santa Barbara, you know?
That's a tough one.
Started with Santa Barbara. Yeah, I, I guess, I, I do have a question before we move on, is I, I'm very clear on, you know, types of trees. It doesn't matter where it is, if it's a destructive and all that, I heard about. So I, I think I understand those things. Uh, the question that I'm hearing. That I have is. When should something not require permits? And, and we, staff had wanted to put some exemptions in.
Yeah.
But we pulled back cuz we were trying to be cautious. So what, like, I was thinking hypothetically, if someone wants to replace a bush or a shrub on their lot, right?
Yeah, cuz your wife tells you to.
Yeah, well, I'm not gonna comment on that, but so.
More important than a city permit.
Like Adam and Eve again, she told me to.
If this is only in the architectural overlay zone, correct.
That's like.
Or non-residential lots, or within three-hundred feet of a historic site, cuz we're not changing that. So. The question that, so right now, if you look at this, it says alterations affect an area less than five-hundred square feet. So that would be, say you're removing lawn, right, you want to remove your lawn. So that would be, say you're removing lawn, right, you want to remove your lawn, which is a good. Um, good thing nowadays with the, you know. And put in, say, more water fishing grass or whatever, stuff like that, right? So right now, you would need a permit to do less than five hundred square feet, where do we get the five hundred square feet? Is the state law says that when you go over five hundred square feet of new landscaping, you need like water calculations and stuff. So we're trying to like. We're trying to make sure we follow state law. But the question then is, is, is there anything below five hundred square feet? That we should just allow without going through approval? You know, is it removing, say, let's say you're removing lawn. That sucks up a lot of water and you're putting in drought tolerant plants, should we require a permit for that?
No. Cause we already, uh, we're paying people to do it. That's why I think we should have an exemption.
The city was paying, if you took your lot, your lawn out and put in drought tolerant, um, you've got like two hundred and fifty bucks or something like that.
To answer your question, Christopher, I would say, my opinion. Anything, as far as like an exemption, not needing a permit, anything behind the front plane of the house. So it would be include side yards and rear yard.
Okay.
That's my opinion.
Okay.
And I know you talked about, well, trees under a certain size, my opinion, trees, the trees over the certain size. They're the ones that people wanna take out, those are also the ones that are dangerous. I mean, people are concerned like, hey, my tree is gonna fall and smash my neighbor's house because it's fifty feet tall now. And I don't want that liability, those, the bigger ones are the ones that people are gonna be more wanting to remove.
Sure.
See, that starts with a complaint, that's why I'm asking the question of initiation. It could be in this zone, but it could be a house that is just totally normal, the guy wants to put in an orange tree. You know, take out something, put an orange tree, he's telling you, you gotta, you gotta get a permit.
My, my only.
Yeah, but there's a lot of people.
City landscape architect, in places where there are views, even though we don't protect views. He makes sure those trees don't have the ability to grow so high that it obstructs somebody else's view. Much less their own.
It's not just a view of the ocean, it could be a view of the hillside.
It, absolutely. So, you know, the species going in is critical. And that's something that needs to be reviewed.
It's another item where it would be really handy to have a code book in front of it, and I could just turn to trees, look at the end of it, really?
So I think I have what I need. I just needed that last minute, thank you.
Okay, sorry it took us forty minutes to get to the last minute. Hey, real quick, um, does anybody need or wanna take a quick break, or are we good? Okay, do we want to say, hey, we're gonna go to a certain time?
I'd love to see us get as far as we can.
Okay, well, let's call it, let's say ten o'clock.
Get it over, I don't wanna study this again.
I don't either, but I also don't wanna be here till midnight, let's just say target of ten. Okay, if anyone feels the need for a break, either wander off or let us know.
I'll, I'll say that when we get through the administrative development permit sections, it should move faster. Heavy.
Right. Okay, awesome, sorry about all that. You should apologize to us for putting us through this, Christopher.
I've heard that before.
Okay, lighting, exterior, fourteen. Straightforward to me?
Yes.
Now, on our budget thing. For future years is, uh, dark skies moving up on the, moving up the ladder at all?
It, it is, uh, we, if you remember, we had drafted an ordinance. But it was, um, put on hold to work on specific plans and other things. It is on our list, we, we have it to, to complete, so yes, we will.
This is where all lighting would be shielded, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, so, um, this may change in the future.
Yeah, it's our lighting ordinance.
Okay. Mechanical equipment, anybody have any comments?
I did not.
Okay. Porches.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna return real quickly to mechanical equipment, um, we are getting.
We've already moved on. You missed your opportunity.
Uh, there are a number of, um, so sometimes our staff team gets caught between a rock and a hard place. Where we require, uh, mechanical equipment to be, to be screened. Separately, we have a standard that fences should be at six feet in height. And we are seeing a number of scenarios, uh, and sometimes there are industrial areas where it's behind a building, et cetera, but where we have some mechanical equipment. That itself is taller than six feet, so we're, there is this, um, scenario, so I don't know if there's gonna, if there's an interest to discuss. Um, size or limitation to, to that screening and if there's ever a time when you do want to see. Um, screening elements in front of you, so just wanted to raise that as an opportunity.
Well, it, would, I guess, would you make a suggestion or recommendation that would differ than what's in here?
Equipment is screened from where? We were just at design review reviewing, um.
The cell tower.
Cell towers on top of an existing, um, hotel. And what kind of screening needed to go around it and how high it had to be, et cetera.
They're doing enclosure.
It was a full enclosure, yeah. So this is for staff to do a staff approval.
So number sixteen would be where that would come in.
Let's see, Jonathan, you, you're familiar with the one I'm talking about?
The, from design review?
Yes, the doghouse.
Yeah, so, so that one would not be eligible for an administrative, one, because it's sixteen here, and then two, that particular.
Architectural overlay, but it is a entry.
Um, more specifically, that one is requesting a height exception, um, so there's the, the height of the zone. And they're requesting ten feet.
That slipped my mind.
Transmitting antennas are not eligible. So no transmitting antenna would be eligible. For administrative approval, no wireless facility would be.
Uh, the federal government.
Yeah, we can't require a permit for something that the FCC says otherwise, right? So, um, if it's a communication, uh, facility, we do have an exemption. That if it's fully screened, you don't have to go through a, a process. And then there's wireless modification rules that apply if you're changing an existing, so. That's like a, this would apply more to. You're putting in like air conditioners and, you know, roof ducting and whatnot, you have to screen it.
Now, once again, item sixteen is in architectural overlay and where else, everywhere?
So it's architectural overlay, nonresidential.
Nonresidential, okay, very good.
So that could be like. That could be here, nonresidential, uh, architectural overlay, said that already. Uh, historic, oh, what did we cut out, historic in here, what did we say? Uh, let me just check something. Uh, so ha- historic buildings, uh, that's not gonna come up often. And, oh wait, uh, historic's like an exemption or something here. And then, um, within three hundred feet of historic buildings, residential buildings, those are the properties.
Okay.
And, um.
I'm fine with it, but this says.
Yeah, I, I was just looking, uh, becoming very popular, but, um, instant, uh, water heaters on walls hung up.
Oh, yeah.
On walls and also heat pumps and split systems can be wall mounted. But I don't see where. In those zones, other than the residences within three hundred feet of a, uh, historic, that that would. Affect anybody.
I, I would say, so if it's not. So if it's mechanical equipment and let's say we wanna account for that. Then I would say that's more fifteen, if it's on, on the roof.
Right.
And if we should be accommodating that at a staff level, then we would wanna note that in here, if you think staff should be able to.
Yeah, it would be a wall mount equipment, um, and that's usually, the tops would be usually six, eight. Top windows or an eight foot plate wall. So just put a note down there to, uh, think about it.
So it's wall mounted, what now?
Mechanical equipment, so, um, instantaneous hot water systems and heat pumps.
It's the tankless water.
Yeah, tankless water here.
Tankless hot water systems.
And would you agree that those should be screened from the street for staff to approve them?
Screen from the street? Yeah, probably so.
I think that's.
They're not pretty, they're not ugly, but they aren't pretty.
Most of the ones I see are behind. The fence or privacy fence.
Okay.
What about solar panels?
Uh, solar panels are.
State dictates there.
Another thing that we have little control over, um, by the Solar Rights Act. So we don't require a permit for solar. Not allowed to.
You're not allowed to?
We're not allowed to, we have limited, uh, aspects of solar we can review.
Cause when I got my solar system, I thought I did get a bill, a, a city permit.
Building permit, but not a zoning.
Yeah, the roof has to be strong enough to hold it, that's really what you're permitting.
Well.
Not location.
Yeah, the utility wouldn't activate until I showed them my, the city inspector signed it off.
Yeah, that's the last thing he's gotta come out before they connect you.
And all the electrical connections and stuff to the panel. All kinds of stuff. Okay, are we moving on?
To seventeen, yes.
Okay, I have a question, when you say porches, what do you mean, what, what, what is a porch?
A porch is, um, let me just one quick minute. Let me refresh myself.
If you want, I can tell you why I'm asking.
Porches, let me see.
Well, but then on, but then on F, it says pro- proposed porch roofing material, it's.
Well, sometimes people will have a retaining wall, i- it's not a deck, uh, they'll have a retaining wall. And then they have a like paved area that they use as a, I guess it's more of a patio. So maybe it should be patio and not porch, um, but it's not a deck, right, it's, but it. It functions similar to a deck.
So is the slab on grade?
Uh, yeah, it could be slab on grade, it could be, you know, a big slab, it could be.
But it's, it's something on grade as opposed to a deck would be, might be elevated above grade.
Yeah, I. Yeah, cause when you read this, it says a porch is raised less than six feet above the sidewalk level or finished grade, whichever is higher. And has an understory which is completely enclosed. So when I read that, uh, the intent there is to account for something other than a deck. That can be constructed of, you know, um, stone and, you know.
Okay, the reason I'm.
Maybe it should be patio?
The rea- well, the reason I'm asking is because, you know, that first in A, it says the porch is raised less than six feet above the sidewalk level. And then, but it says it has an understory which is completely enclosed, so then I'm thinking kind of like a deck, but with a stucco finish around the supports. But then in F, it talks about the proposed porch roofing, and I'm like thinking, well. A paved porch doesn't necessarily have a roof, so I'm confused. I just, for what it's worth, I just looked up Google, what porch says, and it says, a covered shelter projecting in front of the entrance of a building.
So it's like a wraparound porch, you know, at the, the front of a building with a roof element and.
We have an attached building that you know that. Restaurant on Del Mar, um, comes out to this thing that, and it is enclosed at some point, and there's.
Yeah, sorry, I, I just have to, on some of these things, I wrote them a while, so I have to remember. And I think the intent, I will find something.
I think you have raised and non-raised, in Talega, we have non-raised ones all over.
Maybe some of those. Here ball. Things where the downstairs are restaurant and residential above and, so it's enclosed below. That maybe not enclosed above.
Okay, right here, this is, I, I know that we can call this. Arguably a couple of different things, but let's say that this were residents and you had like the entrance to the building. And then you had a space in front of the building where you had like a little roof element. And you wanted to put a couple of seats there, right, there's like a seating area with a roof over it, that's a porch.
Okay, so, I'm, I'm just, I'm not trying to be facetious, I'm trying to literally understand.
I understand.
Are we talking about, like, both of these, Webster said covered, so. When we're talking about a porch, we're talking about. A covered area in front, presumably in front.
A building.
Of a building, is that, is that?
That sounds right, and if we wanted to find that more, we can do that, right?
Okay, so, so if that's the case, just, just hear me out. Item A says a porch is raised less than six feet above the sidewalk level, so. Well, the ceiling, if it's covered, the ceiling would be more than six feet.
Yeah, so the floor, the floor of the porch, right? That's the, I think the intent there is the finished floor of the porch.
It's not clear.
Right.
So again, let's come back to the question, what porches are minor? Right, cause historic, you can't do this on a historic building, so let's make that clear. So no historic buildings, so this is something that, say it's architectural overlay, nonresidential building. Uh, could be a home that's two hundred feet from a historic building, and they wanna put a porch in, right? Um, what is minor, that, that's what we're trying to achieve here. Um, is it, maybe we go back to the deck example, it's a certain size? If we like the two hundred square feet thing, we can do that.
Or less than fifty percent of the frontage of the home.
Yes, and maybe the existing, you know, roof line is extended versus a whole new one.
Oh, it's, yeah, yeah, that's great, yeah.
That would do it.
Yeah.
In other words, if it's simple, let them approve it, get it done.
If they do a good job designing, integrating it into the structure.
Yeah, if it's integrated into the structure, yeah.
Okay, I think I got it. Does that work?
Yes.
Okay.
Let's move on.
Yep, okay, good. Roofs and re-roofs, well, on D, roofs and re-roofs, S tile roofs are not eligible for administrative approvals. Why not, I, I would think, is S tile, what's special about S tile?
S tile is not good, high quality Spanish tile.
Doesn't work in the architectural overlay.
I mean, cause it's clay?
So you guys want.
No, it's different than what you've seen on projects going to the commission. So what you're used to seeing is s- single barrel tile where there's, this is, there's like multiple hoops in one piece. And then you keep laying them on top of each other, so it looks like a manufactured look versus. Versus what you're used to seeing, which mimics a hand, almost like a handmade looking tile. So like Rancho Santa Margarita type of roof. Not San Clemente.
I think I probably have S tile. Okay. Moving on. Sheds or spas. The shed or spa is entirely screened from public right of way and separated from buildings according to the building code and less than five feet. What is?
Oh, you, you have the draft.
Yeah, I don't have that less than five feet.
I, I have that comment, Commissioner McCann, that five feet is gone.
Okay, okay, I don't, yeah, just FYI. So I read all through this, you know, two versions ago, and that's where all my notes are. So like, I'm not re-transcribing to each new version that kicks out, so.
I understand. I, I know the five feet that you're mentioning and
It's gone.
It will not be there.
That's in the red line? What, what page are you on now?
On D forty-one.
So I can kind of sort of keep track.
One question I, staff has is on B. Again, going back to the hardscape, we decided on, I think it some other item, I think it was decks, that we would keep that. Am I right that we want to keep that?
How is the spa going to, you mean, no in-ground spa? Just the above-ground spa?
Uh, that's a good point, yeah. So this would mean it can only be above ground.
And that, that's not as attractive maybe as an in-ground?
True. So if, if the commission's okay with staff approving a spa, um, not requiring it to be over hardscape, then we can put that in there, but we want to get that direction.
The, the Yeah, I am too. The other thing where we required it was decks, right? But decks could have been bigger than this, cause here we were limiting it to a hundred twenty square feet. I'd be okay with not being over hardscape.
Well, decks be limited to two hundred square feet.
Right, and this is one twenty.
True, yeah.
So we're talking about a smaller area of impact.
Yeah.
So are we okay not over hardscape?
So you're saying strike C altogether? Uh, no, maybe not C, uh
B.
The, uh Yeah.
Um, question for you.
Yes.
Um, backyard decks. Uh, this hundred twenty feet would be the spa with this little fence around it? Could be more deck around, deck beyond.
Oh, are we, oh, we're going to the shed or spa would just be the spa.
Yeah, you're not allowed to have a spa without it being enclosed by a fence or locking gates.
Not supposed to.
Yes, and then we have the fencing category where they could apply.
Staff should still be able to approve a larger deck without the spa.
Uh, well, the decks are the other category that we looked at.
Which is two hundred feet.
Two hundred feet.
Yeah, so I mean, the whole thing could be three twenty.
It could, there, yeah, theoretically.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
Yeah. Any other nineteen comments?
I don't.
What is the section F fifteen for the mechanical equipment?
I will
I think this goes back to what we talked about a few, a few minutes ago.
It's the mechanical equipment.
There's a whole bunch of other requirements that it shouldn't be in the side yard where it makes noise.
Oh, those would still apply, you know, because you'd have a building permit.
It says all pool equip, all pool and spa equipment is located as far away from adjoining properties as reasonably practical. In consideration of neighbors and the equipment's property line, decibel level is consistent with the noise ordinance.
Okay. Twenty?
Outdoor seating. Outdoor dining. Who worked on that? Yeah.
Okay, twenty-one. I don't, I, um, I think people should be allowed to put in more than three skylights without having to kick it up.
Okay.
Um, it's my personal opinion.
Uh, there was resistance to that way back when for people looking, have a view of the ocean and people below and have all these skylights with lights going all evening and whatnot ruining their view. And the compromise was trying to limit it. I know that discussion was had during the general plan. So it's kind of an arbitrary number, but that was the mindset.
Okay, let, let me just tell you where I'm coming from, for what it's worth. The house I'm in now, I moved into it, it has, has kind of a big great room and it has three big skylights in it and it is awesome. Half the time I go to move, leave the kitchen and I go to turn off the light and it's not on because it's just all lit up with natural light. It's so nice. Anyway.
Yeah, the three was an arbitrary number. It wasn't based on any policy direction on the general plan or anything, so like, we already, we do have separate regulations that say lighting is to be shielded, you know? So you could argue that's covered if, if you want to remove the three, I, I, staff doesn't have a concern with that. I think it would violate any policy.
I'd like to see it removed. Energy saving to have them, but
What does the dark skies have to say?
Uh, dark
reviewing at some point in time?
Uh, dark skies would just say that lighting needs to be shielded, so you could theoretically require skylights that are compliant with dark skies, right? There, there's light, skylights with like a, um, type of glass or, you know, you could do that, that.
That probably needs some more research.
If you, if you'd like, we can you know, we can look at that, maybe just reference that it's consistent with the dark skies policy and then
Yeah, we can't put that in there, so we don't have a dark skies policy yet.
True, but we
I just don't know what that means either.
I can, I can look into, look into it, um. You know, keeping in mind that I, I, I know that there, the dark sky ordinance is not proposed with this, but that is on our plate, so um, no. I get, we could always come back and change it later, you know? That's how codes are. If you want to limit it to three now and come back and take it off later when we have dark sky ordinance, uh, we defer to you.
And they're really not limited to three if they want to take it up a step. This is just for staff approval.
That's right.
Does Bart, does D, skylights are located such that they're not visible from the front of the building or street? Help out?
I don't like that one either.
Okay.
I mean, skylights are energy friendly.
I agree, no, I'm a fan. I like them.
The city and the state, I'm sure the state loves them.
Actually.
Title twenty-four would love them.
I'm not sure why they're being visible from the front really matters.
Uh, if you don't have concerns with that, we could take it out, you know, it's just more us anticipating what the commission would
The other, the other thing that's kind of arbitrary about this, like three, I mean, it doesn't talk about size. I mean, what is, does a solar tube count as a skylight? Those are like twelve inches in diameter. So I, I personally would be happy to strike B and D. That's one man's opinion.
What are we putting ourselves in a position where staff can't approve it?
I think I just leave it how it is.
I'd like to see them be able to approve something, but not as many as some people want.
Let me ask you
There's got to be a break point where it really does require more study.
Is that a big problem here? I mean, do people come in a
No, it's just, right now, we have broad categories, so the moment you get rid of them and you have to fill out what minor is, does this
It gets back, it gets back to, just one second. It gets back to Bart, like if this gets in here, does this become the de facto standard? Like even if it gets kicked up a level, well, you have more than, you have four and this says three here and they're in the front and they shouldn't be, like, does it become the standard when it's, was never intended to be?
Uh, if it's in here, staff, excuse me, staff, yeah, it's a standard. If you don't meet the standard, staff can't approve it. So, but it doesn't prevent them from going to a hearing. They could go to a hearing and
Exactly, but the reviewing body, let's call it, say us, will then say, well, this was the standard.
Well, it could be the Z A, it could be the, um, could be Z A, couldn't it?
Yeah, the Z A could approve more than three.
These are only standards for staff to review it, not standards on what you can or can't do.
Right.
This is just what staff can approve.
I understand, but what I'm saying is that I'm afraid that if this becomes the what staff can approve, then it kind of sort of could become the standard for the reviewing body.
Then I would
They're not gonna have anything else to say. Yeah, five is cool.
But if that's what the city determines, um, what the standard is, that's, that's what the standard is.
I, I would suggest if that's a concern, we add a sentence about that. That the following project-specific standards are to define what staff, what are eligible for staff approval, not to limit what is permissible in the city.
Right at the front. It's more of a decision-making definition than a standard.
So I can put that at the very beginning of the project-specific standards.
Cause I think E is interesting. Skylights follow one of the following standards. They're flat and made of reflect, non-reflective, or they're invisible. To me, that addresses the issue, uh, that you were mentioning earlier, Bart, about them lighting up the sky.
I know that was, um, a big issue in those suspicions.
So with E, you, I would be more comfortable a lot, you know, giving the staff a little bit more leeway by eliminating B or eliminating D with E. E, I think.
How can you make a skylight invisible from off-site locations?
It's in a well.
On a, on a
If it, if that's a flat rest.
On a, how do you do the drainage then, so it doesn't?
Like any mechanical well.
Okay, I don't know. How, how does that work? You have a little drain in?
Waterproof flat roof, if you want a flat one. Uh, you're allowed to have X number that are, doesn't say that's the only solution. They can be screened by the, put on, um, aside. Where did you get this? Was this Santa Barbara?
Yes.
Chris?
Yes.
I'm not sure you do invisible either, but it seems like if you can do it, you would let the staff
And this is, this is in our architectural overlay, correct?
It'd be architectural overlay, non-residential, uh, the properties we've gone over. I can read this one again.
Let's say when, uh, doing the big distribution warehouse.
You have a parapet roof.
You have a parapet roof. Probably would have done a hundred and fifty skylights on that thing.
Yeah, I, I, looking at this again, I would strike E two. Um, or if you want to define it differently, like, it's almost like you could so D, D, you can't, it says one of the following. Um, I think you could eliminate two and you have D, so you could say skylights are screened from public right of way.
Well, I like, I like E because it eliminates the solar tube. We have a solar tube that was installed a couple of years ago on our on our street and, you know, it's great in the daytime for them, gives you get the light coming in. But at nighttime, it acts like a flashlight. That, that thing is like a, like that light, you know, just on a little dome, but just
Let, let's put this for more research, be discussed at the next meeting.
That's the Bart's point earlier then, people don't
Ideally, the, well, the goal is staff will be making changes to the ordinance and presenting it for hopefully a recommendation at the next meeting. So for staff to do, make changes.
I think we have other ones we're gonna review too.
Yeah, I'd be fine leaving all this, but maybe just take off B. If they can do D and E, take off B.
Yeah, the, the three is pretty arbitrary.
Yeah.
Or something.
Am I understanding, wait, I want to be clear, is the, is the expectation that we're possibly going to continue the item to work through this some more at the next meeting before staff makes changes?
At the very beginning, we looked at what, eleven or whatever it was, page eleven. And we did agree we were gonna talk about that when the balance of the, uh, commission is here, correct?
Well, we we've talked about, yeah, I mean, you guys had concerns back to the three hundred feet and a little bit of change of heart. And so I said, hey, do we want to go backwards?
No.
And we said, no, let's talk about it when the balance of the commission is here.
And this comes back.
But we're gonna see it again when we edits. I just don't know that we're gonna get through everything before we give up on energy tonight. I, I personally wouldn't want to promise we're gonna be done tonight.
No, no, it's, staff isn't, that's not, um, I guess
And trust me, it's not like I want to be here.
But, but what I, I guess my question was more on, are we already clear that we're going to want to have the full commission to go back and talk about prior items?
Yes.
Yes, okay, then staff is not gonna be able to anticipate what the full commission will say about prior items. That gives me
Well, I, I don't think we need to review what we reviewed tonight, cause they had no input on it at all. But I think when they were here, I don't want to change things that they were in support of.
Understood. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to understand a little more.
Okay, so I'm proposing eliminate B and on skylights, number twenty-one.
I can leave that.
Okay.
And leave the rest.
I, I just, so, I like that. I I don't necessarily know what the problem is with having them in the front of the building, especially like and or on, on E one, so I just, I just built a house in Dana Point and I added four skylights. And by the way, the, the, the people, some people like, I want to buy this house because it's so bright inside, like, they really liked it. The skylights, and I looked at lots of different options, the skylights that I ended up with, which were low E and at title twenty-four and all that. It was, I bought them at Lowe's, they're two by four. They were flat glass, and so not kind of the bubble dome type. And they, they, they came up, you had to build them up like about four, six inches above the rest of the roof, but then it was flat. So it's pretty non-intrusive visually, much less intrusive than like the big bubble type. But so proposed skylights are flat, it would be cool with that, but made of a non-reflective material. Well, glass is gonna be reflective, right? What is, how do you have a?
They have low reflective glass in skylights.
Low reflective. We change that to low reflective as opposed to non-reflective?
Sure. Uh, I'd have to look that up.
Okay, well, we can ask staff to look it up. I'd be more comfortable with low.
I get more of the interpretation that Santa Barbara doesn't want, say if your eve is coming down flat this way facing your neighbor's house across the street that, remember, like, I don't think there's a skylight that goes just one way, kind of like the solar tube. So that at night, if you have a whole front line of that roof that has one, two, three, four, five, you know, that light just comes right out to the street.
Okay, I hear you, so
But so you, these either have to be, if they're gonna be to the front of the house, then there needs to be a parapet so that at nighttime that light will go up and not come over to the
so that at nighttime that light will go up and not come over to the.
Across the street.
Yeah, it's so like the solar tube. I think that's more what they're trying to get here. I think the three is it's just the volume of light and where it's gotta go. And since they say it's not can't be visible, it sure enough can't be anywhere on the roof that it's gonna shoot out. Cause again, it's to protect the, it's like a two-way street. I mean, you wanna have the light, but your neighbors don't wanna enjoy your light like at ten o'clock in the morning.
Light spill is what it is and glare.
It's more like the ordinances that say in your parking lot, your light needs to come down on your property.
Right.
So I think they're saying if you want a skylight and towards the front of your house, it needs to shoot up straight somehow. They're not gonna let you put it in the roof.
Angled.
Yeah.
I I would suggest changing off-site locations to be more specific and cause that could be lots of properties and say adjoining properties.
Sure.
So the property. You're talking about number E two?
Uh E two, yeah, adjoining properties.
I think this is all gonna get changed when we get into dark skies, so.
Well, it would that would apply, that would apply in addition to this. So, you know, that that wouldn't like replace this. It would just be more specific on which glass could be in the skylights and, you know, uh it would get into, it would add regulations that wouldn't, you know, I don't think this would conflict with it.
No.
Okay.
Okay, moving on.
Yes.
Trelluses, pergolas, and arbors?
So again, do you on historic structures, does a trellus, pergola, or arbor have to be over existing hardscape?
I would say no, you could have a trellus over a landscaped area.
Any other comments on that? There agreement?
Well, in the architectural overlay, that could mean that staff has the ability to approve a um arbor or pergola along the whole front of a building, even downtown.
Uh in D, it says less than two hundred and fifty square feet.
Well, they only come out about six feet, so that's a pretty long pergola.
You could restrict it to.
Yeah, the fifty percent.
Less than fifty percent of the front edge of a structure or something.
Cause you can have a trellis just against the wall.
No, I I kinda think that needs review.
Uh screened from public right away, says that.
The ones that are screened from public right away, I have no problem with.
Yeah, so B, it says all of them would have to be screened from the public right away. Separated from buildings according to the building code. Uh I don't know, N, less than five feet. But not all tre- pergolas.
A says the city's designated structural list, the trellus, pergola, or arbor is cited over existing hardscape. Doesn't say anything about having comply with comply with everything.
Well, it. Okay, well, I could fix that and make clear everything else applies.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, under less than five feet, does that some kind of an error?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
So should we allow attached trelluses and? So my staff's recommendation, if anything, would be in A to remove the hardscape surfaces and just make clear it has to be detached that from a historic structure. That's.
Has to be detached, you said?
Detached, yeah. That's and maybe you could even say behind the building, you know?
Okay.
Cause to me, an arbor, like the little arch thing is like for plants and vines to grow over. A pergola is like almost a pseudo patio. It's like a pseudo like uh it's a it's a structure that you sit under. It's bigger. That should have a little bit. To me, an arbor or a trellis, no problem.
Right.
Pergola, more, more.
We could break out pergola.
Yeah.
Separately.
Make it easy to have a trellis and an arbor, easy. Pergola, a little bit more of a bar.
So what would you want the bar to be?
Restriction in size.
Do you get many of these?
Not, no, but we have to account for them if.
Well, I'm thinking, let's say we have um a ranchito, the back patio. Uh it's visible from a street, but they could put a pergola up there over the outside dining or an arbor or whatever they want. And according to this, that could be a staff approval.
No, cause it's not screened from the street, so we would not be able to approve that. It would have to be screened from the street. So that's uh B.
But does it say everything has to be, okay.
Yes, it has to be screened.
It has to meet all requirements or just the?
He covers.
Well, some of them like, yes, it has to meet all, but some of them will only apply to like, okay, well, historic or whatever. Or ones on the lot line or.
So just to kind of go back, what I've heard is for historic structures, we're in agreement that anything should be detached from the building, which is a very common thing throughout all these project types, is we're trying to not interfere with the building. We would remove N less than five feet in B. C, you can just remove because we already talked about the historic over, we dealt with that in A, it's a duplicate. The trellus, pergola, and arbor, there's a two hundred and fifty feet and twelve feet tall. What what I heard discussed was maybe a percentage of the frontage. Do we like that idea if it's, uh but it's.
And the front edge, it's gonna, it's not screened.
Yeah, it's screened, yeah.
Doesn't matter.
So, okay, two hundred and fifty square feet. Is everybody okay?
I'm fine with that. That that's okay.
Um then the question is E through G.
I think a trellis and an arbor should, we should allow metal for those.
Metal in the architectural zone? Absolutely not. No metal, no metal whatsoever.
Well, I think like if my, so staff would suggest breaking it out then, like we did a while ago.
I would, I would, no, I'm saying that shouldn't necessarily be staff's approval.
Oh, gotcha. Okay.
Not that it's outlawed, just I think that needs review by the R S C.
Are these little hoops and they're mostly metal?
Mm-hmm.
But what about like here?
And you can't even.
Let's say this building, let's say a metal trellis is proposed over the staff bench out there.
Non-architectural area zone, it's not in the architectural overlay.
But it's a non-residential building, so it would require a permit. And you can't see it from the street.
I don't have a problem with that as long as it's not in the architectural overlay or um a specific plan, um that'd be okay, I guess.
So can we just limit it that way and say if it's not in an architectural overlay, historic, you know, those
Yeah, I'm okay with that. Yeah, yes, I'm just trying to protect our historic treasures.
Okay. Any other comments?
No. No. Moving on, walls. Eligible walls are not in yards adjacent to street frontages.
Not sure what that means.
Yeah, what does that mean?
So that means like a front yard, you couldn't build a wall in the front yard with staff approval.
Sure, what about like a little low wall, like a little seat wall?
You think we can do that? We can put that in, but we we thought that there would be concern with regard to historic structures, so we just said no.
And I would have that, yeah.
You you wouldn't want them to be able to approve like a seat wall? I I personally would be okay if we put a height limit on like thirty-six inches or thirty inches or something like that. But I could persuade.
I if any.
I think that needs the R S C approval for something like that.
I think if anything, I would suggest making it where you can't see it from the street then, you know, like if you had like a an existing, say you had an existing retaining wall and you can't, there's like a sunk seating area and someone wants to put a little like planner box there, that would be like a foot wall and no one's gonna see that. I I I don't know if that's an issue, but um it would have to be something really minor like that, that I I I would pause and to the, I'm I'm speaking of the the point that I heard before is what if like some new staff person was here and, you know, there was concern about that, I would wanna suggest something limited.
We could so add unless it was not visible from the public right away at the end of that sentence.
Well, I heard I heard a couple of things once, put a height limit in it, right? He said.
So Bart's Bart's saying he's uncomfortable and and honestly, I really defer to Bart.
Well, I'm not even sure that in a lot of cases, a wall is even appropriate period for historic resource.
Okay, so.
And it should be reviewed um accordingly.
Okay.
I mean, there's some cases where we know we have sloping lots and there's um a little retaining wall that's six inches at one end, three feet at the other, and for safety, you gotta put something on it um at the three-foot end. So, you know, that's gonna take some judgment calls. So I think it needs to be reviewed.
Okay. Uh one, so one important thing I wanna point out is for quite a while, we've had a condition of approval for how to apply stucco finish and that's in here. So for the first time, we would.
Where's, which one is that?
G. That's G. So there'd be more clarity on stucco finish here.
Walls of not non-traditional material.
That's straight from our condition of approval that we use all the time.
Uh what is this saying? It's saying you can't do it?
Yeah, it's.
It's saying you can or can't do it? You could have bone nose or you can't.
I could rework this, but the main point is here is when you say stucco, C at the very end, stucco, that is not steel. So, oh wait here, uh yeah, I see your point.
Well, I don't even understand what walls of not non-traditional material are.
This is regarding like Spanish, like if it's a Spanish project and you're doing what we were trying to address is if you have a Spanish project and you're putting stucco on it, you have a condition of approval that says, how do you apply the stucco? Tantral, mission finish. That's what we're trying, that was the primary objective of this. We can reword it to make it clearer. I I understand.
Yeah.
Beyond Spanish, though, uh do we have any uh need to put any additional requirements for materials, considering we have those general standards? Can you think of anything else that we need to?
Well, I mean, if we're talking Los Molinos district, you can just about do anything.
Yeah. And that's covered in the specific plan. Okay.
To me, a railroad tie should not be used as to as material for a wall.
It's not a great substrate because it moves.
I just don't think it's a good idea and all at all.
I'm gonna change this and make it clear that to go back to the intent is.
Yeah, it's fine for like a planner box, but it's not fine for.
I'm not, I'm not sure we have to specify what the substrate is for the stucco.
Uh what part of the?
Well, isn't that whole thing saying non-traditional materials such as painted exposed concrete?
Oh, yeah.
It says walls of not non-traditional.
I would say for Spanish architecture, stucco has a steel hand tral applied.
There you go.
Finish, so on.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah. All right, I I got that.
What about, what if someone wants to come in with a port in place wall?
No, point taken. What I'm what I'm suggesting is to limit this to when it's Spanish architecture.
Okay.
With stucco.
Yeah, I think you need two, two points, one for that and then one for the other stuff.
Uh the other stuff, uh I suggest using the general standard we already have.
Okay.
For various materials and styles that, you know, come up. If that's okay with you, then I think the 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 main thing that we were trying to target here is it's clear the city has opinions, you know, rightful opinions on what proper stucco is. If you look at the Henry Lenny Design Standards, it's in there. And that's what we were trying to cover.
Yeah.
Is that, okay, so when you say for Spanish, you're you're gonna say for Spanish tile or for homes designated historic Spanish tile?
For Spanish architecture on one of the properties that requires a permit, so architectural relay, historic, um but then three hundred feet, any of those.
Okay, so hypothetically, so my house is Spanish style, I would say, and I put smooth stucco on it. Would would that be allowed? It's not, it's not a designated historic home. Would I or would I have to make it bumpy, light slight undulations?
Let it be within three hundred feet of a historic building? In the architectural relay?
Well, mine isn't, but um.
If it was, it would.
Yeah, the only, the only.
So if I'm through two hundred and ninety feet away from a Ole Hansen house, I have to put slight undulations in my stucco.
Yes.
Okay, I I personally think that's overkill, but.
So then what I would suggest then is we limit it to the architectural overlay and um historic structure, um Spanish historic structures.
Yeah, cause yeah, cause to me, if if my home was designated historic, absolutely. And mud packed roof tile and all that stuff, but if it's.
I agree, yeah.
Okay, good point, yeah.
It says walls of not non-traditional.
Yeah, I'm gonna.
So that means walls of, okay.
I'm still confused.
Cause that means traditional.
Uh and by the way, just just to be, when we say walls, does this include this, is this standalone walls or also walls of structures or both?
It's walls, the standalone walls.
Like a block wall or a garden wall?
Yes.
So not not a the wall of a home?
Well, that's a good question to me. Me, look, it's second.
And all I'm asking is do we need to clarify?
I think so.
Cause I'm.
I was thinking these are like property boundary walls and interior, you know, walls to delineate parts, you know, outside, not the structure wall.
No, it applies to both.
Okay.
Yeah, applies to both because keeping in mind, we're defining these categories now. So yes, it would apply to both.
Should we, should we, should we mention that to make it clearer for future staff and the public?
Sure.
Is it traditional Spanish?
Building walls.
Like on exterior garden wall? Art to have the hand tral slight undulations and the stucco?
In and out.
Well, that just has a little skip.
It's mimicking Adobe that's been um. It's mimicking adobe that's been plastered and whitewashed. That's what it is.
Okay, I'll clarify that.
Okay. Windows, minor alterations?
So the windows, we have a window policy sometime ago, we worked out with the planning commission, and that is reflected in this. So we took that policy and, put it in here. So like on E, what I'm, maybe it's the same thing here. Say for the architectural overlay, I mean, I put Spanish architectural district, but I could say architectural overlay. Uh, and historic Spanish structures. I, I could do the same thing there, that's what I'm hearing. Um, but if you consider the architectural overlay, like downtown does not only have Spanish buildings. So when you go to the window policy, it doesn't limit it just to Spanish buildings. It says like if you had, if let's say you had a um, you had a vinyl window or um, you could have a building constructed in the seventies with the wood window, and they want to replace it at ground level in the architectural overlay, what windows should we allow? That, that's in that window policy, so.
I wanna make sure when, like Julia Darden and Michael Kopp were on the uh, design review and on the commission, it was always the policy that in the architectural overlay, particularly in Del Mar, at least the first floor being a pedestrian uh, area, that the windows and doors were gonna be wood. And then if they could mimic on the second and third floors or whatever above that with a fiberglass or um, with wood texture looking windows, no aluminum or anything, uh, that was the policy at the time. Does this reflect that?
Uh, yes, we took that policy and put it in here. So it says for red, non-residential windows-
I'm looking at the blue pages.
Yeah, where, where are we? Because I don't see it.
It would be E.
D forty-three.
D forty-three, so.
Right.
Non-residential vinyl.
E.
Vinyl is ineligible for administr- um, administrative approval.
Okay, good.
For residential vinyl is, are eligible, screened from the public right away, joining the parcel. And that's in the policy. So I think that E should be changed to say for the architectural overlay and Spanish historic resources.
Why historic? And not just leave it as you have it there, Spanish architectural district or?
Cuz we have historic buildings that are not in the architectural overlay. Yes.
Yeah, I think on El Cabino going south between North Beach and T-zone, they allow Spanish architecture, not just Spanish colonial revival.
Yeah.
Cuz it's not the traditional architectural overlay, right?
Most of it's Spanish.
Well, the architectural overlay includes those areas, just, so if we say architectural overlay, it covers it, I think.
Okay.
I'll, I'll work with that. Okay.
Forgive my ignorance, I've seen that letter that specifies, you know, like when you can use fiberglass versus wood, when it's required and stuff. I, but it doesn't look to me like this language includes that, but I thought you said that it, it did. Or, and or should we incorporate that language in here? Because right now, it's, it's not really, I mean, it's kinda quasi-official, it's some letter that everyone's been honoring as this is our policy. But should we codify that in here?
I mean, I don't have the table in here. Instead, I, like if you look at that document as a table, I didn't see the need to put a table in here. Um, instead, I just made it simpler. So it says no vinyls allowed where it's visible from the street. So I just, basically, when you break down the table, that's what it says.
Where, where does it say that? I'm sorry.
The document, the document that you're referencing?
I know, but twenty-four, what, A, B, C, D?
Oh, E five. Which is, oh, E four, sorry. So it says for non-residential windows, vinyl is ineligible for administrative approval.
For, so that, that kind of implies that for residential, okay, are eligible if screened from public right of way adjoining the parcel.
So like a project in the A overlay, staff could not approve any vinyl windows? Because the window policy says that.
Where, 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 where visible from the public right of way?
Yeah, they should be able to do it in the back or the side.
Because it's five-sided architecture. Uh, we have, we have projects where you can be driving down and you can see the window from the other side of the block. So, like, if you would like, we can send the window policy to you and you, if you, during, before the next meeting and you can compare what we have, and if you think we need to change it, we can change it.
And specifically on Del Mar, the goal at some point in time is the alleys behind those buildings are gonna be a paseo. So, you wanna maintain the architectural style on the back also.
Oh, I agree a hundred percent. I'm a hundred percent on board with that, I'll call it the letter policy memo. I don't have it in front of me, from recollection, that's more explicit than what's in here. And so I'd be okay dropping the table in there. And that's all I'm saying is.
Okay, uh, how about, uh, my suggestion is we send the, the document to the planning commission?
Okay.
And then prior to the meeting, if you see a need as a body to make changes, then we'll make them.
Okay, one last thing. Cuz what I'm reading, I'm not jiving with what I heard. This says in E, for Spanish architectural districts and projects, windows are to, and then go to E five, for, there, they are to be constructed of wood, fiber, steel, fiberglass, aluminum, or vinyl in certain instances. For non-residential windows, vinyl is ineligible for administrative approval. For residential sites, vinyl windows are eligible if screened from public right of way, joining the parcel. So that implies they're okay on the sides and rear, but I've just heard, hey, we need them in, not, not vinyl in the back and stuff in certain cases.
That's for residential-
Yeah.
Sites.
So if I have an Ole Hansen, I can put vinyl windows in the back? Is that what the letter says?
No, because we have another thing dealing with historic buildings. So that's, that's a different, historic buildings are different. This is like, um, let me give you an example.
Okay, so all I'm saying is it's confusing. Like I'm more, I feel like with my experience, I'm more knowledgeable than the standard person and I'm confused. So should we specify for his, for, for historically designated buildings?
That's always a good framework. Well, that's A, it says right for cities designated historic resources and landmarks list, see subject traditional standards. So it's probably, they're gonna tell you.
I, I, I'm, I'm confident that I have the direction I need to make a couple little tweaks here to make it clear. The intent is to follow the window policy document. So I would suggest we send that to you, and if you see a way that, you know, keeping in mind, I think the intent is to use these materials again, we're not gonna get through everything. And um, we can talk about it again at the next meeting if you wanna revisit it.
Okay.
Yeah, cuz fifty, it does say that. F twelve.
Anything else? This, this, this item is actually one of the more straightforward ones because we have that document. So it's really like modeling these things after that document, I'll look at it again.
I, I feel like that, that document is super clear and this is less clear. So you'll look at it, you'll bring it to us.
I understand where you're coming from, I personally have the opinion that the table is confusing. I think it's overly complicated. But it's not my decision, if the commission disagrees with me, we'll put it in.
Okay. Yeah, shoot it to us and we'll, I'll look at it with fresh eyes.
Okay. I mean, the goal is to make it easy to read, so, you know, we take your direction. So uh, the rest of this text is really just to explain again, that, so the city planner makes the decision based on the general standards, the project specific standards, and then the city's objective design standards, recognizing that we're working on those, that would provide even more guidance to staff. I made it very clear in here that projects will be completed in accordance with city approvals and the code, and city staff has authority to require an inspection to ensure work is completed. So that, that's something that we do now with staff waivers. We wouldn't have conditions of approval anymore, so now that's just in the code, we could do inspections. Some things might not require a building permit, it could be painting, right? And we should have the ability to make sure they paint it right. Any questions on this? Oh, uh, well, actually, wait, one thing. So you'll note, uh, I, that we say that it would be going in the planning commission packet and the city council. And that would be the case regardless of the appeals process, so. I don't know if you had a question on that wording?
Where are we?
Uh, D forty-three.
Yeah, section G, application.
We're almost done with admin approvals.
Maybe she should stop on D forty-four.
Okay, anybody have any comments?
On D forty-three, no.
Okay. Did you say something about D forty-four?
Well, I think it's a good place to break, you know, to take a, or to adjourn. Cuz we only have twenty, it's twenty minutes to ten, we're gonna get all the way through the development permit in twenty minutes.
Uh, the development permit, so now we're at the point of these staff recommendation. As we've gone through eleven on this table and twelve, eleven and twelve.
Right, but we still have thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen.
And, but if, going back to what I said earlier, after we get through what we just did, I think that the rest of the items are a lot faster, but it's the planning commission's-
I guess I, I see what, um, it looks to me like the rest of the items on this summary sheet, we could probably get through pretty quickly, so maybe we should keep going on this. But on, relative to the development permits, if we kept going on D forty-four, D forty-five, I, I kinda think we really need to have our thinking caps on, on that D forty-five, D forty-six, D forty-seven stuff, which, which thing gets which process? Or have we already feel like we covered that?
We can go through it, but that, that is not really substantive changes, it's just a change in format.
Okay.
Like the table, the table is not how we have the code worded like presented now. But we're, we're going through this, this table here and we're getting direction on how to streamline things, right?
Right.
That's gonna be reflected in the development permit and the cultural heritage permit and all that.
Cultural changes, right?
So I would suggest we try to stay with this table
Okay.
and get through that.
Okay.
If we, if we have appetite to do that, um, this, I don't think it would take a lot of time to get finished.
I agree with that. Okay. Okay, keep following?
Yes.
So which item are we on?
Thirteen.
We're on thirteen, so page D seventy-three.
Christopher, I just wanna make sure, cuz I do have issues in zoning around G twelve, around G two, that page. So as long as we don't skim by that, we can come by that later, G two.
G two?
That's table seventeen dot twelve dot zero dot, uh, zero two zero. Review authority for permits and entitlements.
Oh, okay, we can, we can go back to that, yeah.
It's backward, yeah. Is that backwards? Yeah, it's back.
Yeah, we can go back to that.
We're on seventeen, sixteen, one hundred table.
Oh, okay, I did not realize we, we passed that.
Yeah, we're on, um, item thirteen in this table, Mr. Casco, right here?
Yes.
Attachment two, and that's page D seventy-three.
Well, but hang on a sec, so are you implying that, cuz before we were on page D thirty-two, or, or we kinda worked our way up to D forty-five, and then the next item is D seventy-three? So are we skipping over twenty-five pages of stuff?
We, we can go through every page, but I'm following what we did at the last meeting. The last meeting, we used this table to go over these things and, um-
I didn't have anything on these pages.
Keeping in mind that we have already received direction on some things that aren't reflected yet. We're gonna need to update the development permit to say that it's based on what we've heard so far, I know we want the full commission. But the three hundred feet and the one twenty feet, right, that needs to be put in the table, that change that we heard about? Yes, so we're taking the body of these comments on streamlining and we would be updating everything when we get everything from the commission. So I, I, I'm confident that when we update everything, at the final meeting, we could wordsmith little things.
Okay. I, I propose that we keep going through the summary sheets. And then, cuz I know that I have some comments that, from my, you know, scanning on other pages, but we just pass through this and be done with that, and then we can, if people have comments, you have comment on G two and I have comments on F thirty-five or whatever.
I don't, I don't have any comments on these two.
Okay.
I guess, I guess I missed-
Doesn't mean I don't have comments, you know, on the final blue here.
Right.
I missed that.
The D document.
So, wait, let me go back, so you were on P, i- is there agreement to follow the table? Is this clear?
Sure.
Okay, so item thirteen, page-
Christopher, just so you know,
Yeah.
the section I was referring to seventeen dot twelve dot zero two zero is not included on here.
Correct, because that isn't a streamlining.
It, what it does is it, what this table does is summarize the process level where certain decisions are made.
Yes.
And I wanna review, I, I have concerns about a couple of them.
Yes, but um, just to, because it happened at the last meeting when we talked about that, just, just to kinda go back. What we had commented on is we're getting all these comments in that table that you're describing.
Yes.
It's gonna have to change based upon the one twenty and the three hundred feet and all these things that we're talking about.
There's other stuff that we haven't covered yet, but we'll, we'll get to it.
As long as we get to it, I don't care when.
We'll get to it, yeah. Cuz I'm gonna, cuz I have all my comments like spread throughout. At the end, I'm gonna go page by page and say, hey, we never talked about this.
I'm with you.
And you can do the same thing.
Cool. That's good, okay, great.
Okay.
We won't let Bart do that, though. Okay.
All right.
Number thirteen?
Okay, D seventy-three.
G seventy-three.
D.
He is in dog seventy-three.
Okay.
So um, this, these changes uh, involve a couple things. First is that staff is proposing to allow beer and wine onsite indoors with food service without a public hearing. Currently, it requires a minor conditional use permit, that's the first thing. Uh, the other thing is we're clarifying how we have these uses, so I, you see a bunch of blue, I wanna make sure. Really, in terms of streamlining, um, B is the only streamlining of this, on this page.
Okay.
Okay, one B there?
Yes.
Right there, liquor B, that's the only streamlining. The rest is clarifications. Because we have, this is like a hotel or an entertainment venue. The rest is clarifications, because we have, this is like a hotel or an entertainment venue that might serve beer and wine. Currently, if you look at our zoning ordinance, beer and wine is only under restaurants, and it's under microbreweries, um, and, uh, wine store, if you do tastings. But that's just not the reality. For some time, we've understood that, you know, hotels and other venues can have those uses. You would need a public hearing to do those type of uses. The only one that we're proposing streamlining is this B.
Okay. Any objection? Nope.
Okay. D, D seventy-seven. Similar. Mixed-use zones, though, or, uh, yeah, mixed-use zones. Same type of change.
So the other was, the first was commercial zones, now mixed-use zones?
Yep.
Okay, a little closer to residential? Anyone object to, objecting?
It would be indoor only.
Yeah, no.
Okay.
When you say indoor only, that would mean no outdoor dining or, or, um, service?
Yep, then it's a public hearing.
Okay, good.
Like it is now.
Okay.
Uh, fifteen is on page D eighty-five. Just need to get my. Oh, okay. Okay, it's at the bottom. So, uh, actually go to page, the next page, D eighty-six. And you're just see, we added the word minor instead of conditionally use permit. It would be a minor conditional use permit. So that would be a zoning administrator to allow off-site parking. Um, that would be like a standalone request to have off-site parking versus you're doing a major development project, and as part of that, that goes to the planning commission, you're doing off-site parking. Should I describe off-site parking?
Um, let me just, hold on. Don't we already have a section in the code that says it's got to be within three to five hundred feet of the project site?
It, that's this section.
Yeah, so it has to.
So what's changed?
It's just that it's a minor conditional use permit instead of a conditional use permit.
Was this triggered by a project we just reviewed at the D R S C?
No, this is not in any way related to any projects. It's based upon, um, the level of public concern and what we've experienced projects, because this is only if someone proposed to do, uh, let's say you're a commercial, let's just give you an example. If you had a property, a commercial business, and you want to have more parking, and you own the lot across the street. I can think of one right now, one eleven Avenue Palazada. They own the lot across the street, but they cannot count that parking towards their uses on the property, because it's a separate property.
Yeah.
If they wanna count that, right now it goes to the planning commission. This would allow them to go to the zoning administrator just to use that parking lot that they own to count their parking towards their uses.
Okay, I'm okay with that.
Sure.
But, but if it's coupled with another discretionary application that requires planning commission approval, it would get bundled with the planning commission.
Right.
Application, review packet, you'd see all of it, correct?
The one I was thinking of, I think, is gonna have to go through that.
Yes, that's the one I'm thinking of, that would not be the situation.
Okay.
Which would, yeah, so just as an example, the item that we looked at first tonight, the church. So a church use required a conditional use permit. As a part of that, they had a shared parking, it still would go to planning commission.
One across the street and. Okay.
And shared parking is the next item. It's similar, but shared parking.
Which?
Set of a, that is on page D eighty-six.
Eighty-six, okay.
Shared parking, it says minor conditional use permit instead of conditional use permit. So again, if it's a standalone request, you have a mixed-use project with some residential and commercial, and say, a restaurant wants to go in there and they don't have all the parking they need, and they wanna share it, uh, with off-site hours or offset hours, they would need zoning administrator approval for that, instead of planning commission.
But no public notice.
Would be public notice.
Would be public notice. Because we had a, public was really concerned about the one down on South El Camino.
Yes.
Affecting their street.
And that one is different because there was a condition of approval that actually precluded shared parking. So that just automatically had to go to a higher level.
Okay.
This would be like, um, let's say the, the property on the screen. They have an office, let's say they want a restaurant, and the, um, office is closed during the day or at night, right? They, everybody goes home, and the restaurant wants to use their parking. The property owner is okay with it, they could apply for a minor conditional use permit instead of conditional use permit to be able to use that office parking so that they could have more seats at night. That's.
Uh, yeah, so I think we're up.
I was gonna say, is that a typo? Shouldn't it be seventeen sixty-four one twenty, under shared parking?
On the summary page.
Yes, on the summary page. It says seventeen sixty-four one ten.
Oh, yes, thank you.
So I'm thinking, Chris, that in the, on the D eighty-six, I spotted it in three, but maybe, I, I think, or maybe I see it in two and one also. I think maybe it needs to be re, just reworded or fixed. I'll read three, all of the projects. Shared parking may be granted through the approval of a C U P in compliance with section seventeen sixteen seventy, comma, minor conditional use permits. So is it, it like, it talks about a full C U P and a minor C U P, and it's, I think it just needs to be fixed a little bit somewhere.
I'm just, I, I would just suggest, I could simplify it even more than that.
Yeah, so all I'm saying is just relook at it. I, I see that in three, I think I see the same thing in two. I don't know about one, but.
I, oh.
So just revisit it.
I'll revisit it, I can make it simpler.
Okay. Seventeen?
Seventeen is page D sixty-four. And, um, the idea behind this change is that master, um, some types of signage, uh, whether it be the size or the amount, requires a public hearing. Right now, with planning commission approval, if, say, you had a over twenty-five square feet of signage in the architectural overlay, that's a discretionary sign permit. That, and they're only proposing signage. It's not a development and signage, it's just signage. Uh, we're proposing that that be reduced to zoning administrator, not planning commission. If it were a project, say, like In-N-Out, and they're proposing signage with the building, that would still be planning commission. So it's only if it's standalone signage.
I guess my question is, why do we even have a signage ordinance if we're gonna exceed it?
Um, it's not so much that you exceed it, it's that there's a certain amount of signage that warrants more review. So it's, uh, if you have, like on this building, you can have bigger building, right, in the downtown, and if you, say, had more than twenty-five square feet of signage on this building, that would require a public hearing. It's, it's not an exception, it's the amount that triggers how much review you get, you have to have.
Would, would it make sense to make a distinction of this between like certain, like retail versus commercial industrial, or, um, does that make any sense, or on specific kind of high-profile streets?
I think if anything, if, if there's some concern about just doing zoning administrator for all the situations, I would limit it to not the architectural overlay. That, that would be where I would go with it, if, if there's concern about this proposal. That would mean, um, let's say you're a business here, let's say right here, and you have more than four signs on the building. They're like not big signs, right? They're just over the tenants. That would right now go to the planning commission, instead it would be zoning administrator.
I think what you, are you trying to get at here are one-offs versus a sign program? So a sign program would be, you know, we're switching out everything, or it's coming as part of a new building. And this is more like, hey, we're just doing an incremental sign. We want an incremental sign permit. Is that what this is trying to get at?
Uh, it is incremental, so it's not combined with development.
Right.
But it could be a master sign program. It could be.
So they do wanna switch out all the signs, it would come, it would be discretionary?
Sure, it would. The proposal is, if it's standalone, just signage changes zoning administrator. That's the proposal.
I'm a, a little concerned on things like this, that we don't know, and, and this is for the public too, what kind of report the zoning administrator is going to receive to make this decision? And what documents are available then to the public or staff to even understand why it was done?
I, I can address that. So, the, the materials the planning commission gets are similar to what the zoning administrator gets in terms of plans and photos and whatnot?
But not the report that supports it?
Correct, but you, you had broadly described what would they get. So I wanna make sure the materials that they get given to us by the applicant would be the same, whether, for the zoning administrator. So they would have the same set of plans and photos and whatnot that you would typically get. Uh, for the report, it's really a difference in formatting. It's more of a bulleted type of format, which requires less verbose writing, like paragraph form. It's just less time to write. It's not like we're cutting out a lot of information to prepare the report. It's, it is less writing time, that's really what it is.
So is the report we receive here for specifically us, or is it for the public? Or would the bullet point report be enough for us?
I think staff, uh, you know, we've, we've even talked, maybe at some point, visiting with you, looking at the report format that you get and.
Well, I think that's probably the best streamlining. Throw all this stuff out. That's probably the best streamlining we could do if, because you're telling a story in the reports we get.
Yes.
Where, um, I mean, the first thing we should get is just a quick chart of the, um, zone and the requirements that that zone has.
Sure.
And it doesn't need the big narrative.
No, this may be the staff analysis and what's compliant, what isn't.
And I've been struggling with this, thinking, you know, where can we really save some time in that? It seems like it would be a heck of a good place to visit.
Writing time, yes, it would save us time. So, but the substance of the report is there, when we give it to the zoning administrator. It's like we would talk about, um, issues like visibility, and are the sizes of the signs too big? And what are the materials? The same substance we would give to the planning commission, we would give to the zoning administrator, but, you know, it's in the resolution that we would provide. Uh, the report is a summary, it's just more of a, less paragraph form.
Yeah, I, I understand that. And that was one of the concerns on that, my notes that I read, was, is that going to, and I'm, it probably won't, but is that going to encourage the writers of it to be a little more apathetic and not do as deep research, since they know they don't have to detail absolutely everything?
I, I, I can tell you that, uh, I've never had a zoning administrator where the expectation was just because it's zoning administrator, don't give me what I need, right? So when you, with the zoning administrator, you need to be ready to explain it, and the report is a representation of that. So before you even get to the me, that's the whole goal of the report, right? Is when we give you a report, you're prepared at the meeting, right? And it's the same for the zoning administrator. What's really just different is the length of pages, because it's not in paragraph form with a bunch of headings and tables, and it's just packaged differently.
That's encouraging, because I think, I don't know if everybody agrees, if they visit this, the bullet point for me would be enough, as long as we get the narrative during the staff presentation.
Yes. Confident if you were to sit at a zoning administrator meeting, you would, and got the report, you'd be able to know what's going on.
Am I invited, Cecilia?
It's a public meeting, you better be.
You're welcome anytime.
So, is there any, is there any need to change this, uh, to limit it to non-architectural overlay? Or are we okay with how it is?
I, I personally wanna refer to.
I, I would prefer non-architectural overlay.
Me too.
Okay.
Because there's so many cool things that can be done with signs, um, that require really a.
And to me, that's where the D R S C really shines, when we're doing that kind of work with applicants.
Plus, it's the fun stuff.
That too.
Okay.
And can I just say, as a person who reviews zoning administrator reports and acts on, on matters at a public hearing, whenever there's a design review subcommittee recommendation or input, that, that is factored in very heavily into the decision and considered in the ultimate design is, for me, is a decision maker.
I mean, I wouldn't have a problem if you put signs to the D R S C, and then some of them went to the Z A, just so that we had opportunity to input on it. You know, they don't all have to go to the planning commission if they're, to me, if someone's changing out their entire sign program, I think the D R S C should have the opportunity to talk to the applicant and look it over and kick it around, even if it goes to the Z A. This is my personal opinion, because I think there's value to be added on that conversation.
So am I hearing that
I don't know how you feel about that.
Design review subcommittee for sign programs and architectural overlay with zoning administrator approval? Or, um, like when would design review subcommittee?
The only worry I have is typically we get projects and they don't include the sign program, and they hold off till another time, and then they take, take that route. You know, path of least resistance, they'd wanna go to design review and Z A.
Well, that's because they wanna get their building permit and get started, and they haven't thought about their signs yet. And that's why I'm saying.
They do, though. I mean, honestly, you, you should design that into your.
You should, but I'm just saying, a lot, they haven't really thought about things like the details of it. If like, well, what's gonna go on this? If like, well, it's going to go on this wall somewhere. I would draw the line at, you know, if it's in the architectural zone, architectural overlay, it could come to the full PC. But if it's not, and an applicant's coming with a full sign program, I think the DRSC should look at it regardless of where it is.
Okay, so if it's a master sign program outside the architectural overlay, it should go to the design review subcommittee before going to zoning administrator?
That's my input, yes.
Even if they comply with all sizes and all, there's really not much to, other than the location of the sign.
There's lighting of the sign, there, there's materials, there's this, uh, there's placement, that's an issue.
How about if discretionary sign permits are, the final authority is the design review board?
We don't make decisions. We're just a recommending body.
Yeah.
Uh, so we can't do that.
But you can, some of those, let's just say that they have a monument sign included in their package. But they're not, it's not in the architectural overlay. Would that, where would that go?
A monument sign is, uh, that's a good question. I would suggest I split that off, you know? Free, monument signs, freestanding signs be...
Probably a good idea because they're located.
Special findings for that. That's a good one.
Okay.
I think like, is it, so the zoning administrator can refer things to the design review subcommittee. Even if it goes to zoning administrator, you know, like, there is that.
Yeah, for an extra set of eyes, yeah.
So there's always the option when the zoning administrator gets, set us plans, if there's concerns about them, hey, I, I don't want to make a decision on this yet. I want to send it to the design review subcommittee.
Yeah.
That's, that's available now.
Okay. I would say go ahead and do it the way you got it, and I'll review it and think about it a little more for the next meet, next get together.
Right.
Hopefully, I'll agree with it still.
I'm going to say non-architectural overlay or freestanding signs.
And monument signs. Oh, freest, it is freestanding.
Yeah. Yeah, so I'm going to cut that out.
I was going to say keep the planning commission, but administratively, they can do it. It's five percent outside of the sign code. That's how it was in Downey. Didn't have all this. It was, there could be administrative approval.
You can solve the whole problem by just changing the ordinance and say you can have five percent more.
That's how it is, and...
And just done, you, you do it.
They can, that was their discretion. They could give five percent more than what, which usually a lot of times isn't a whole lot.
Five percent on twenty-five square feet is...
Not much.
One point two five square feet extra.
That was the leeway that the, that the city gave if it wasn't going to be in the planning commission.
Make it all the way through?
Yeah, that's the last one.
Through, through the summary sheet.
Attachment two.
Right.
That was it.
So I would propose that we continue this item until the next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting.
Let's put a, uh, time and date on that.
I know.
To clarify for the record, that'd be the, uh, be April nineteenth, I believe, is the next meeting.
Do we not have anything sooner than that?
The, uh, the fifth canceled.
Yeah, and a note, correct, a notice of cancellation.
I think it would be the nineteenth would be your next meeting.
The fifth is, the fifth is canceled?
Correct.
Okay.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Okay, then I would move that we continue this item till the April nineteenth, uh, regularly scheduled meeting at this location at six PM. Anyone second?
Second, sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
motion passes?
We'll, we'll come back. Okay, well, in other words, will it be you wanting to bring the revisions back at that meeting?
No.
No?
We would keep the material, I mean...
Okay.
I'm thinking we keep the materials. I should put the mic on. Keep the materials, go over these items that we wanted to revisit with the full commission.
Okay.
And sort through some of the comments that you had, and make sure, you know, we're all understanding of everything, and then I make all the changes to the documents for action.
Okay, so we'll see it two more times?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I'm thinking, just see, I'm thinking like on this one, which I think you had the same thing on development activities, which process, I know I've got a few questions.
Yeah.
I think I do elsewhere in some pages that we skipped, and I'm going to leaf through my comments, one sheet by sheet, and say, hey, what about this? What about that?
Yeah.
I expect anybody else
Cool.
to do that as well. We'll add on things, like I know you wanted to add a few things and stuff.
Yes.
And then we'll give all that, so we'll give that next time to them. And then they'll go back and edit and bring it back to us.
I just want to make, I just want to, um, say that if any commissioner has questions or comments, welcome to contact me before the meeting, and we could talk about it individually.
I'm going to call you.
Individually, you know, so...
I have a quick clarification to throw out there. So, um, on the TFA, we have the, um, April fifth meeting shown as canceled, but if this is a continuation, we wouldn't have to send out noticing. Uh, so Christopher, I just want to clarify, are you intending to prepare new materials for that next meeting? So if we're not intending to prepare new materials, we do actually have a fairly busy April nineteenth, uh, planning commission agenda already. So if the planning commission's amenable, potentially we could reconsider, um, that adjournment, date certain, and consider doing that on the fifth where this would be the only item on the April fifth.
I think that's a great idea.
Let's do it. You guys are up for it, I'm up for it.
Bart?
I'm going to be out of town from April sixteenth through...
No, yeah, we're talking about...
So we're saying move it up to April fifth.
April fifth, so you're here.
They're around for it.
And it'll be the only item on the agenda.
We'll get it done.
If he can get it done.
No, he's not, he's not, he's not touching it yet. We're just going to go through and finish off any comments we have in this.
That works.
Yeah. Thank you, that's good.
Yeah, okay, so I amend my motion to be...
We have to reopen the meeting.
We haven't closed the meeting yet.
We haven't adjourned.
I didn't adjourn.
No, it's just...
I thought we did adjourn.
We voted on, we voted on continuing the item.
Planning commissioners, unfortunately, Christopher is not available on the fifth, so...
Sorry. Leave requests is in.
Oh, we are stuck with the nineteenth, um, so...
About another, another day.
Put it in May.
Cecilia, would we need to agendize a special meeting tonight? Or is that something that we could consider opportunities and then, um, connect with the chair?
I don't know that that's necessary unless staff feels like it is.
Yeah, I'm gone out of town from April sixteenth through May sixteenth.
If the nineteenth is false, should we push it to a different meeting?
Uh, let me take a look at the TFA, one moment.
And while he's looking that up, I want to say something, which is I greatly appreciate every single person being here, sitting here, and thank you, staff, and Chris especially, for being so patient. And thank you to my fellow commissioners because every one of us is engaged and reading it and thinking through it and...
And it's pretty dry.
And it's pretty dry. So I, I really appreciate everyone's, everyone's... Toughing it out on this. I commend you.
So what did we decide?
We have an adjourned. Other continuation?
We do have a very full agenda planned for the nineteenth, so, um, we could certainly adjourn to that date. But there, if we, if all of those items do remain on the agenda for that evening, we might recommend a continuation to the following meeting. We could alert you in advance of that likelihood and...
We have a study session on the, on the nineteenth?
Uh, we do not have one planned as of yet.
Would it be possible that we could take this up in the five o'clock hour?
That is possible.
I don't know.
I, I'm, I'm okay with Jonathan's idea. Throw it on the agenda. If we get too late, we just continue it again.
Okay.
Yeah, by, by having it on the nineteenth, there's no harm. It's there. If you get to it, fantastic. If you don't, it's a motion and a second. You kick it till another date certain. You keep it alive for noticing purposes, so that would be the, the cleanest way to proceed.
Okay.
Okay.
Awesome. One last comment is for staff to be thinking about. There was a lot of comment up here about, there's other places where we feel like the public gets frustrated. It's not in the streamlining, but in the building, planning, over-the-counter world. So maybe if you guys could be thinking about, hey, how we tackle or address that, and I'm sure you already have a million times, but maybe you can inform us about that.
Yeah, I, yeah, one, one comment on that is, um, it goes back to the idea of, well, this is just one piece of the review process.
Right.
If we save time on this, we have time to review more building plans, right? We have more time to review grading plans, and it, it all works together. So we only have so many staff hours, and, um, that's where this does have a difference.
And that helps on the build, on the planning side? But I bet a lot of the frustration people feel is in the building, plant check side?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to like note that there is, there is benefit in this even that was just a piece.
Directly and indirectly.
Yes.
Okay, awesome. I'm open to a motion to adjourn.
Do we have other, any reports or...
Oh, sorry. Any staff reports or commissioner reports? No?
I would just note that I did send an email to the commission. There is a Planning Commissioners Academy next weekend, and if you do have an interest in that tomorrow morning would be the best time to alert our administrative team to that.
Because we've got a good one, a good session on, um, take mandated housing stuff. We got a whole session on that and, uh, worth, uh... These are great seminars.
Right.
So if you review that email, uh, the agenda is linked in there, uh, the program for that weekend. So let me know if you would like to register for one day or for the weekend if you are interested, and we'll get you signed up for that. So I just wanted to remind you of that.
I think it's Friday, Saturday, Sunday, isn't it?
I thought it was during the week.
Well, I'm open to a motion to adjourn, and then you guys can talk about that after the meeting. In fact, I'll make a motion to adjourn this meeting to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the planning commission on Wednesday, April nineteenth at six PM at St. Clemente City Hall.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting closed.